I'd like to call to order this work session of the Forest Grove City Council. The topic is City Charter Commission Recommendations and Review. And I'm going to turn it over to our city attorney, Ashley Driscoll. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Council. City Attorney Ashley Driscoll. I have with me the Chair of the Charter Review Committee, Alicia Johnson. I'm going to introduce her a little bit more as I get into the presentation. All right. So tonight, what we are doing is presenting the results from the Charter Review Commission's Recommendations to the City Council for potential amendments to the city charter. If the council would like to pursue any amendments, these would be referred to the ballot perhaps in November 2024. So this process has been going on for quite some time now. In late 2022 is when the city first began talking about forming a Charter Review Commission. We had a series of meetings to discuss what that commission would look like, what the scope would be, and some discussion about timelines. In February 2023, the city began the process of recruiting and convening on the Charter Review Committee. The overall purpose of the Charter Review Committee was to review your city's charter and determine if it adequately served the community well into the future. So the committee itself consisted of 10 voting members. The city council decided that two of those members should be from each quadrant of the city and three should be at large. And then the committee started meeting in late August of 2023. At our first meeting of the Charter Review Committee, the committee appointed Alicia Johnson to serve as the Chair and the committee appointed Adolf Val Valkyrie as the Vice Chair. And I can say after going through about eight months of meetings, they did exceptionally well, running some meetings always exactly 90 minutes and very productive. So regarding tonight's presentation, I'm going to be going over the scope and the purpose, and then I'm going to turn it over. And both the Chair and I are going to be reviewing and explaining each one of the recommendations from the committee. And after each one of the substantive topics, we are going to stop for questions, comments, and discussion from the council. So diving right in, as I talked about, we started meeting in late 20, I said 2022 earlier, late 2023 regarding the scope of what the committee's task would be. And the charter delegated authority to, I'm sorry, the council delegated authority to the Charter Review Commission to review the entire charter, to compare your charter to the current League of Oregon City model charter, identify any areas that the committee was interested in pursuing, and then pay specific attention to four areas that the city council asked the Charter Review Committee to review. Those areas are geographical representation for council members, limits on the, term limits for the mayor and council members, the necessity of a city manager residency requirement, and the role of the mayor and the council president. So as I mentioned, we have been meeting since late August. We had 15 publicly noticed meetings. Those meetings were held here in the community auditorium and were accessible via Zoom. Part of the expectation document from city council was also that the committee receive and consider public input. So at two of those meetings, we had an opportunity for the public to comment upon a draft amended charter and a draft committee report. And we had three members of the community participate and provide really great feedback that the council, the committee then considered and incorporated into its findings. All right. A little bit about our process and how the committee approached this task because it is, it is a pretty significant and open-ended task. So the first things that we did is we compared the current city charter to the League of Oregon City's model charter and evaluated the differences. You know, where the two documents differ, where they're not, there weren't a ton of those. We took a look at what the city's current language said and what the model charter language said and discussed whether it made sense to align the city's charter with the model charter. Of the city, the committee also reviewed for other areas that the committee was interested in reviewing. And by a majority vote, if the majority of the committee would like to pursue that subject area, that subject area was put onto the list. And those subject areas included ranked choice voting, a process for appointing city counselors. And then also, they took recommendations from the city attorney. And my recommendations included reviewing how the city handles appointing city counselors when the council has a number of vacancies and a number of procedural issues that I have noticed through my years working with the city. So after we identified areas for substantive areas for review, we went through each one of those charter sections in numerical order and addressed each one. The process was typically that I would introduce the topic. I would do a short staff report on the subject area and provide some information. So the committee considered information that was applicable to each section under review. So for instance, we looked at a lot of historical Forest Grove information. For example, how many people typically run city government? That was one that we looked at in terms of when we were discussing wards and districts. We also looked at voter turnout information, representation from each jurisdiction, the tenure for council and mayors, any piece of information that would help the city deliberate on the subject matter and they felt would be useful, we gathered for them. And I say we, I should, I should give some credit to Joyce Phillips, who did a great job helping the committee gather all of this information. Oh, we also looked at information from comparable jurisdictions around Washington County to see how similar cities handled these, these types of issues. And then when appropriate, we also looked at statewide data. We also looked at research papers, NPR articles, you know, legal opinions regarding the different matters that we are facing. And once the committee believed that they had enough information to make a decision, the committee started deliberating and discussing each one of the substantive areas. The approach that the committee took is first by answering the question, is this a charter issue? So we took a look at what the issue was that the committee wanted to address and then asked the question, is changing the charter, charter the most appropriate or effective way to effectuate the change? The committee discussed at length that the charter functions as the municipal equivalent of a constitution, setting forth the guiding principles for government. So the charter can also be inflexible and difficult to amend. And when you make changes, there can often be unintended consequences, and it can be difficult to evolve with a changing environment. An overly prescriptive charter can produce inefficiencies and restrict the city from adjusting to or evolving with a changing environment. And as I mentioned, it can also create unintended, unintended advantages or disadvantages to certain groups. So that, to that end, the committee approached each matter by first asking if this was a charter issue or if this could be addressed through a different avenue, such as an ordinance policy, a change in council, or administrative personnel. In the end, what we looked at is the big picture. So the committee endeavored to look at historical patterns and longstanding concerns facing the city rather than drafting amendments that were targeted towards one specific, one specific set of circumstances or individuals. So that's the process we went through. As I mentioned, we had 15 meetings. So these things were often discussed at length and a lot of information was gathered. My personal opinion is that the conversations were robust, that, you know, the Chair made sure that everybody was, everybody participated. And I would say I was very impressed with this group of meetings. So before I move on, is there any discussions or questions about that? Great. So how we're going to divide, you know, going over each one of these subjects is similar to how we took it, is I'll do a quick, you know, staff-like report, go over the subject that was discussed, and then Chair Johnson will go over, you know, how the committee reached its purpose. So the first area that we looked at was one of the areas that the council asked for a specific recommendation on, and this is wards or districts. So I would, I would say out of all the topics that we looked at, this one was the one that we looked at the most background information. As I mentioned, we, we looked at a research paper, we looked at legal opinions, the committee looked at data specific to Forest Grove and spent a lot of time considering whether to recommend that the city change its, how it elects its city counselors from all the counselors being elected at large to all, all or some of the city counselors being elected from a district or ward. One of the first things we talked about is that there's really four different kinds of, of districts or wards. So the first one is when the candidates are nominated by ward, but they're voted on at large. So essentially, you know, if you had four districts, you just had to have, have to have one candidate from each of those districts, but then everybody in the city votes on all four of them. Candidate, the second option is candidates are nominated by ward but voted and voted on only by ward. So that's an electoral ward, so you're only voting on the candidate within your ward. The third one is some candidates nominated by, by ward, some at large, but all vote, all voting is at large. And then last one, some candidates nominated by ward, voted on by ward, and others at large and voted on at large. Ultimately, as Alicia's going to get into a little bit more, the committee is not recommending that the city move forward with wards or districts. I'm just going to go over a little bit of the information that they looked at in reaching that decision. So we pulled a lot of statewide data providing which cities implemented wards and details about their system, including what the population was of those cities, how many wards they had, what the electoral system was. As I said, you know, are they voting on them at large or are they voting districts? And then total numbers of counselors. The committee also looked at our comparable jurisdictions within Washington County, only the largest of the district of the cities within Washington County, the city of Philpharo is divided into wards, all of the other jurisdictions, which include Sherwood, Tigard, Cornelius, Walton, and Newburgh are not. We also looked at a legal opinion on the drawing of voting districts. And the issue behind that is if you create voting wards, you have to make sure that you align with the statewide constitutional mandates of equal voting. We took a look, look at what that would require of the city and essentially what it would require is a biannual census to make sure that your voting, voting districts are, you know, create an equal voting environment. The committee also looked at map showing where current council represent, map showing current council representation by quadrant. So in reviewing a map of the residence, the residency of current council, the committee noted there was at least one counselor from each one of the four districts of, I'm sorry, four quadrants of the city. Also looked at the voter data in Forest Grove and current geographical representation on city boards and commissions. And then Forest Grove data on turnout, on voter turnout by precinct since 2019. And then finally, a research paper on the electoral ward system in Oregon. That paper was from 2003, and it was very interesting. And Joyce helped me update those numbers to make sure that we are looking at more current data. That provided a lot of the background on, you know, the cities that did use wards, what was their population base. So once we gathered all of that information, the committee began to deliberate. I'm going to turn it over to Chair Johnson about what was most important.
Evening. When we took a look at wards, and I have a lot of that here, but I'm really here. We really tried to, and not just with wards, but with all of our conversations we had, we really tried to ask ourselves, what are we trying to accomplish here besides just looking at the issues that you requested? What is the overarching theme here that we as a committee, we as community members feel is most important? And one of those terms that continued to pop up was just the equity. Changes that we're looking at, and they help increase or enhance equality. And that has many layers to it, right? But when we looked at wards, just looking at, as Ashley said, the data, some of the major concerns and things we went back and forth on as a committee is when you divide an area up into wards, you run the risk of there's a benefit because you have lower, lower costs when you're running, you're campaigning. But the downside of that is that person that's running for a particular ward may tend to just focus on issues of their area. And if you have an entire council that's just focused their particular area, it can be a lot harder to achieve consensus, whereas with our current system, everyone is representing community as a whole. So that was one of the bigger pieces. Ashley mentioned it as well. Another overarching theme besides the equitable piece, how can we enhance that, was looking at unintended consequences by dividing our city up in wards. So we did take a look at our, our current quadrant system and looking from a precinct standpoint. And voter, voter engagement regrettably is, is low. And by creating these different areas, we could potentially be in a situation where we have a ward where there perhaps isn't a viable fit. And then we go from having that democratic process in the sense of the community elect their official to it falls on the hands of the city to act on that ward. Those are the major factors we discussed. The other thing I would like to point out after reviewing the data, a lot of data, it was a unanimous, unanimous decision to not recommend wards at this time. I will mention however, as, as you'll hear me repeat a few times tonight, besides those overarching themes, is that wards is a great idea, but as a city, I'm not going to say or not. I'd like to open it to your questions.
Councilor Ying.
I thank you this evening for coming and for being a guest here. Well, first of all, I really want to extend my it was one of the most meaty, one of the most well-reserved things I've seen in other professional development. But regardless, so in the board conference, did you get any input from community members or from individuals themselves that they weren't with, without having a board that this?
That's a great question. So we did take a look or take into consideration the livability survey. And what we kept circling back to in terms of that equity piece, we talk about guarantee, guaranteeing equal representation. And just based on the data, based on the, you know, looking at the opinions, wards does not, or at least we were of the opinion, wards do not guarantee that condition, especially when the engagement isn't quite where we would hope to be.
So, yeah. So the livability study, but I guess my curiosity, and I do not just I guess my curiosity is, could we, is there a way for us to identify particular areas of the community that don't, that they're being fully represented? Did that happen to come forward? I know it wasn't, but did that happen to come forward from any individuals?
I mean, absolutely. Just, you know, from our 11-person committee, you have people from every quadrant of the city. And just that overarching thing is how, how can we enhance things? How can we have more equal representation? So it's definitely in the hearts and minds of, of everyone. That's a bit of assumption, just talking about a lot of people in the room, but representing from all different parts of the city. So does that answer your question?
It does, but I guess that as a follow-up, for us in the future, I just want to make sure not to think forward that somehow we are competing with anything that's being fully represented.
And, and maybe that's another way I can word this is we felt this was more of an engagement issue than equal representation. Instilling wards would not create more engagement.
Any other questions? We can go to the next topic.
Let's see. All right. So the next topic is the role of the mayor and the council president. I'll introduce this briefly and then turn it over to Alicia. So this is one of the topics that the council asked the committee to look at specifically. And I would say the one that we went back and forth on the most, you know, are there improvements to the role of the mayor and the council president that would, you know, meet the committee's goals? I'm going to turn it over to Alicia to talk about what the committee is ultimately recommending on this topic and why.
I think I'll give a little bit of background on our conversation. So again, I don't say it a lot, but going back to that equity piece and how, how can we ensure that all voices are, that we have representation from all of our different parts of, of the corners of this community? So one of the things we discussed was the role of the mayor. So you have the, the policy piece, you have the administrative piece, and people serving as the lead is on for the city. What we were most concerned with and spent a lot of time talking on is really, not just with our city, but at all levels of government across the nation. Facilitation is essential. Being a consensus builder is environment. And just ensuring that all voices are heard. So initially, when we looked at the role of the mayor, we were discussing and looking at changing it to mirror some of our other partners, other city partners, going to voting only in case of a tie. And not to do that in the sense of taking the right to vote away from the mayor, but really just lightening the load in the sense that they now have the ability to really focus on building consensus and facilitating. But as we went through this process, and, and I'll say, when we originally discussed this and we went around a few times, a couple of meetings, it passed by a slim margin. It was six to five vote. So the mayor voting, agreeing that the mayor should only vote in case of a tie. After we had our listening sessions, our, our public hearings, we received a lot of valuable community feedback and decided to revisit the issue and discuss it further. And after going through, just kind of deciding why we were really wanting to make this change, it, it came down to when we talk about facilitation, it really falls on that individual. And by taking away their vote, isn't necessarily going to guarantee that they're going to facilitate. So really, we, we reached the consensus that are we doing this more so in an effort to try to think of the way to put this, look at an individual as opposed to looking things from a broader perspective? So after reviewing, like I said, that community feedback, it ended up being a, almost a unanimous vote with a nine to one vote to just leave the mayor's role, voting role as it is. Other recommendations we did however make is with the council president, having that be a rotating position just to ensure that we are building that next generation of leaders, that it's not just the same person in that role. The other thing we looked at was changing the role of the mayor from political head to civic leader. So as the charter, it, it's not just about comparing things and looking at what's recommended, but it's also asking that question is, are the changes we're making today going to represent the community in the future? And one of the things we were saying is with political head, it, it tend to have, tends to have a negative connotation of it. And when we think of things more from a civic leader, it, it's really, again, focusing back on that facilitation, fostering engagement. So those are essentially the recommendations.
Nope. So this is a recommended change from the committee, and it's just to be text of the role of the council president. So the council president will not serve for more than two consecutive years. That doesn't mean that the council president, it does not mean that the council president isn't voted on each year. It's just after two years, the council president is mandated to rotate. There is some extra text on this slide. I believe that last, that last sentence is not included in the amended report or on the amended charter. That language was from when the committee was recommending that to just kind of ignore the last on the slideshow.
I had a question. Going back to the proposed change, changing the mayor's role as a political head of the city to a civic leader, where did that language come from? Is that in the LOC charter? Is that in, I mean, I know Tuolton just did their charter, Sherwood, Tigard. Did that come from, I mean, like where did that, where did that new language come from?
Yeah. So when we are going through, one of the, the words just stuck out when we were talking about the role of the mayor within the committee. And the committee started talking about whether or not the word political really reflected the charter and in the changing city. And so I believe the city at Tigard at, during their process, was also looking at changing political head of the city to something else. I don't know if they ended up doing that. But the word civic was just a, you know, came up through the conversation. So without changing really the substantive role of the mayor, could we find a word that reflects that role better? And so it was, you know, we went through quite a few different potential words, and civic leader was the one that they thought reflected the role of the mayor without having some of that part in the under.
Thank you, Councilor Gustafson.
Just a comment, I, I do prefer the, the term civic leader as opposed to head, just because it, it brings me back into, you know, corporate life where you were the boss, right? And you're the person in the back, you see the picture of them, you know, flipping the whip versus a leader who's at the front pulling along with all of their employees, right? It's, it's where you're putting that, that leader. Are you, are you pushing your employees or are you right there working with them and leading them? So I really like the, the term change.
And just to provide a little clarification to, to what you were saying, the, the negative connotation, excuse me. The word that kept coming up when we, when we speak of negative connotation was that autocratic approach. And when you say political head, it, it tends to imply that same.
Thank you. Councilor Ying, did you have a question?
Yeah. So I will say that that is at the door, soft when it's going to ask. That term always came up, did come up quite a bit. So I'm really glad that you guys went further and put in something that is less politically defined. So my question is, that, did you receive any type of pushback or any type of clarification as to the change civic while you were going through the listening sessions or input to the unit?
I, I think there were definitely varying opinions, but what we circled back to as a community is really making sure that the language we choose is sustainable beyond today. And just really focusing on what, what do we want our city to do and what do we want our leaders to be? And it's really focusing on that collaborative piece.
Ashley, did you happen to have an opportunity for a nonpartisan position to look at whether or not using it and titling it as a political leader? Had any legal ramifications?
So no, I don't believe that there's any legal ramifications. It is the term that is used in the League of Oregon State Model Charter as well. And it really is supposed to be a term that just incorporates sort of those unstated roles of the mayor. You know, despite, you know, being a leader among equals, that often the mayor is seen as, you know, the leader of the city and recognizing, recognizing that role within the city charter. And there are oftentimes auxiliary duties that are assigned to the mayor. And again, just recognizing and encompassing those within the charter. We did get some, and I think this was your question, we did get some public comments about the change from political head or proposed change from the political head to civic leader. And some of that commentary was that, again, encapsulating those, those other duties of the mayor and that, you know, in some ways it is a political position, not a partisan position, but as a lower casey type.
Councilor Rippe.
That's the, thank you again. Appreciate all the work that went into this. With regard to this, and I agree with you, I think that the, the term political leader is ambiguous at best and can be open for interpretation. And we've already discussed about the autocratic notion of it. But the, the city, city governance is, is a council form of government. And so in all, in truth, the head of the government is the council, not the mayor. So when you discussed this, were you focusing just on the mayor? Or were you focusing also the fact that the governing body is the council? And the role of the mayor in that council is what really needs to be described accurately? So, and then, and then the political part of it, to me, did you discuss the, because of the ambiguity of it and the little people, the potential unintended influence of partisan politics at a nonpartisan level of government? Did you discuss any of that?
Fill in the gaps.
You know, I would say with all of these issues, and man, I wish they were, you can't go back and watch them. But with every issue, we, we spent a lot of time asking ourselves, it wasn't necessarily just about the mayor or one, anything specific, but just looking really from a holistic standpoint, what, what do we want to stand for? And when we talk about council, when we talk about the mayor, there shouldn't really be a claiming of a political stance, right? It's supposed to be nonpartisan. So we did look at that, and we literally, at one point, were in the dictionary like, okay, like what, let's make sure this is, you know, this is an accurate description and checking with Ashley, going back and forth, what are the legal ramifications? So there, there really was a lot of back and forth discussion on that. I hope that answers it.
Right, but what your recommendation though leaves it as ambiguous as it was all along. And, and I, I am personally not necessarily sure that the LOC has it right in their model. That's not the gospel from my, it's a, it's a template to use, but it, it's really up to each of the city.
Yes, so I can address some of that. When you were saying, did you consider all these things? I was, I was smiling because like, yes, we spent a lot of time on this issue. You know, what is the most appropriate word choice? And, you know, I think the LOC model charter is a great place to start, and I agree with you that it's not the Bible. One of the things that I think is helpful is there is a footnote in the LOC model charter, and it says that, you know, the political head makes specific the apparent and inherent authority of the office. And that's what I was trying to articulate earlier, that there are a lot of, there are some apparent and inherent authorities that of the mayor, you know, in the role of the mayor, you know, whether or not they're the person who's invited the ribbon cutting, et cetera, to encompass that within your city charter gives the council the ability to be able to define that through your council. And so I think that is why most city charters recognize that there are some additional roles of the mayor, and then you guys can fill in the bottom of the caller, so to speak, through your council roles and your other, through your other documents. So we did spend a lot of time looking at the role of the mayor, the role that the mayor serves on the council and how they fit in. And again, you know, we went back and forth quite a bit on this word. And then, you know, it was a tight, tight vote, I believe. I'm not remembering what exactly that was. Then after the public comment, went back to.
Wait, could you say that again? So you, you said that after the public comment, you went back and voted on it, and then the consensus was to go back to political head? So not to change it to civic leader?
Recommendation is not to change.
Okay, it looked like on the thing that it was saying, the recommendation was to change it to civic leader.
It said in the packet, it said exactly what we have here, no proposed amendment.
Okay.
Which is status quo, which leaves it ambiguous as it was all along, which doesn't.
I think the, I mean, I don't think, it's not time for discussion about it yet. Okay, so we'll, we'll pause and then, are there any more questions on this section?
Do you want us to keep going through other substantive areas then?
Yeah, let's just, let's move on. So I think we have our questions answered. It's more of like a deliberation.
If you need my thesaurus, we can get it, we can get it out as we did with the, with the committee. The next topic is term limits. So what we were looking at is the city of Forest Grove does not have any term limits for your counselors or your mayor. And so I'm going to actually turn this one also over to Alicia to talk through the committee's recommendations.
I'm going to read off the slide and then I'll elaborate from there. So we went back and looked at data from the last 20 years. The most thing that we looked at was the LOC, comparing cities of population, considered a result of citywide livability survey, so taking community feedback into it as well. And then really just taking that time to look at the pros and cons, so the benefits of having term limits and what some of those cons were. So some of the, the key things we talked about were really going back to that engagement piece. And the ultimate concern was because our engagement is not yet where we would like it to be by putting term limits into place. We could be potentially limiting those individuals who can and are willing to serve. Also with that said, if, if someone new is wanting to run, they still have the ability to do so. Other things we talked about is the importance of continuity. And there's something to be said for having that, that experience on the council. And really just that we're, you know, I, I believe, we believe as a charter that term limits are important and I think they need it at all levels of government. But as a city, we are not there to really foster a little bit more engagement before we.
Yeah, I have a question. I'm sorry, I'm like, I can call on myself. The livability survey, I believe a large percentage of the people who completed that survey wanted term limit. Is that correct or?
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven percent of the 1,128 people. And then, what, I guess what? I guess I need a little bit more. So in the overarching theme of looking at equity, accessibility and engagement, right? Like, so I'm hearing like, we don't have the engagement to make these changes. How, how does having, I guess I'm not following how having term limits goes against those overarching values?
Sorry, I'm going to speak a little bit. So just looking at that average 30% turnout was part of it. But also too, just looking at data, you know, because we talked about how we went back 20 years. And when we take a look at, from a quadrant standpoint, where council members, where mayors are coming from, we do actually, at this time, we are getting representation from all of those areas. And really, it just comes down to that concern if, if we were to place those limits. Even though we are getting representation from those areas, it, if that representation is sometimes coming from folks who are willing to run again, and we don't have any new people stepping up yet, are, are we putting ourselves, backing ourselves into the corner and limiting our pool of candidates?
I have a follow-up question for Ashley. If someone has termed out, let's say we did a term limit of two terms per position, right? So after their eight years, they've termed out and no one runs. Based on our charter right now, could the council and that person, it would go to an appointment process, correct? And then could the council appoint that person who had termed out?
So it would depend on the language of the charter, but you know, I think typically they would be ineligible to have another term because the idea is that elected or appointed
need two terms.
I mean, again, it would, it would depend on what your desire was, and we can draft language to whatever the council desires. But typically, like if you're at the end, if your, their term limits, you can't run and can't be in that position for at least a certain period.
Okay. Any other questions about term limits? Councilor Rippe.
Yeah, I'd like to understand the logic or rationale behind it's an infringement of the democratic process.
The infringement.
Why, what's the rationale behind the infringement or claiming it's an infringement on the democratic process?
On the bottom of the.
So when we were talking about the infringement piece, so when someone is elected, right? They're elected by majority vote. And what we were saying is by putting term limits in place, we are limiting and telling people who they cannot vote for on, on the simplest level. That is what we were, we're being by infringement of.
No, actually, you got it perfectly. So I mean, it is more like one of those general responses to term. You know, when you, when you research this issue and why some entities choose to use some term limits and some don't, one of the biggest cons that people reference is infringement on the democratic process, meaning that the electorate isn't electorit, isn't getting to decide who they want to represent them. There's this other, there's this other eligibility requirement that they have to exert. So essentially, somebody that the people want to represent them is ineligible.
In a perfect world.
Yes.
It's arguable because sometimes I think that, I don't want to get into discussion. I'm sorry.
We're delivering, yeah, it happens. It's fine.
I have to remind myself we're in the question.
Are there, are there any other questions on term limits? I have one follow-up question. Out of the comparables, how many municipalities have term limits and how many do not?
I believe I have this in my notes. So Cornelius and Newburgh have no term limits. Hillsborough, Sherwood and Tigard do. The League of Oregon State Model does not include term limits. And Hillsborough, Sherwood and Tigard all have different term limits. I believe Sherwood just implemented them. One of them has like a, you know, how many years within a 20-year period? They went pretty deep on how they wanted those term limits.
Thank you.
I believe Hillsborough just three.
It's eight years, right? Per position or eight years total?
It's eight years per position.
In Hillsborough?
So the other question I had, I'm sorry, but was, did, did you have anything on Beaverton? What was Beaverton?
Beaverton is not included in my notes, but I can find out.
Okay, I think we can move on.
So the next one is city manager residency requirement. So the city manager residency requirement as is relatively simple. It's whether or not the city is going to require in your charter that the city manager reside within the city limits. You currently do have a city manager residency requirement within your charter, and the committee is recommending that you remove that requirement. And if it is something that is important to the council, that it's something you can negotiate with. And Chair Johnson, can you give us some of those, some of the reasons the committee is recommending?
So this discussion ended up surprising me a little bit in the sense that there was quite a bit of opinion on it. But as we went around and deliberated on the issue, what it really came down to is a city manager requires an substantial, substantial amount of experience. And by saying the individual has to live within a particular area, again, going back to some of the other discussions we had, you're really limiting your pool of candidates. And we also felt that, you know, as a charter committee, it, we're tasked with looking at, are there other avenues? Is this something appropriate for the charter? And we felt that this sort of subject matter is best handled on a different level, perhaps in the hiring process and negotiating. As I said, we did go around a little bit, and one of the concerns was, you know, if you have somebody who's hired in this role, it's important to be able to find the pulse or know the pulse of, of the city. But that's not to say that you can't negotiate. Okay, you're, you're hired, we'll take you, you live an hour away. What, what's the realistic timeframe for you to move closer or move into city limits? Just by putting that in the charter, even putting it in the charter with a timeframe on it, we really felt that would not do service to.
Councilor Ewing.
So yes, this has been an issue of 19 years that I've been serving. So I'm appreciative of the fact that you gave it consideration. So one of the questions that I'd like to kind of discuss a little bit further, was there a conversation on, so as I understand from your conversation, you felt that was better than a contract position than perhaps stating specifically that they need to be within, you know, a certain driving distance in case of an emergency? Or is it in the charter that they have to live in Oregon? So kind of walk you through that conversation a little bit.
So we, and we actually did talk about all those very, those very things. And to the credit of, of the council or whoever in the hiring role, we're not going to hire someone in California to represent Forest Grove. So, so we looked at that piece, and then we talked specifically about maybe we have you have to be within 45 minutes or so many miles. What if the housing, and there isn't a house within? Or there isn't, there's, there's an accident or some sort of catastrophe, and they're not able to get here within 45 minutes? What, you know, what, what then? So we really tried to take it very seriously in the sense of looking at. So we really tried to, um, take it very seriously in the sense of looking at all of these things and what are the unintended consequences associated with it? And we really felt the best tool for that would be in contract.
And Chair Johnson said that perfectly, just to add one additional piece, is that's where the inflexibility of if you put fifteen miles between. Yeah, and so, you know, we did have all of those.
I don't see any other questions on that.
All right. So, um, recommending the change, the manager need not reside in the city. So these are, um, I'm going to take these, these are more, uh, you know, procedural changes that the committee is recommending. So first, uh, I, the committee is recommending changes to how you enact your ordinances and approve resolutions and orders. This is really just an efficiency tool for the city. It aligns with the League of Oregon City Mob Charter. And it gives the city the ability instead of having to read aloud any amendments to ordinances, resolutions or orders, that the city can just make sure that those are made available ahead of time. And then you can choose to read any substantive amendments during the meeting, but you're not required to. Any questions on that?
Councilor Ewing.
Okay, so what does that benefit us other than for clarity and for members who are not as familiar with the methodology of going through this? What does it actually provide us as a council and a city that we currently aren't?
Efficiency when you need it. So, you know, again, it's always the council's option to read any, you know, substantive amendments aloud. But, you know, if you post an agenda and this doesn't happen under Jesse's watch, you know, but sometimes things come up and, you know, you have to make a change. So you post the agenda on Tuesday, you realize on Wednesday that there's some changes that you need to put into your ordinance, you repost those, you know, the following day. Then, you know, they've been in your packet for a, a good amount of time. You don't have to use your precious council meeting time to read aloud all of these changes they've been incorporated. So it gives you that option whereas before you.
Will there be any equitability concerns in terms of people that perhaps don't have the website, they're, they're counting on, you know, really seeing where they need to be and what the title is? Does that change to cause any concerns?
I'm trying to think that through. I mean, my, my gut reaction is, is no. Because, you know, it's, it's just somebody that is accessing the agenda on Monday and then something needs to be updated, something's updated on Tuesday and then it says amended in the packet on Monday, on the day of the meeting. So they're aware that they're. Thanks. Um, so the next one is also a relatively minor amendment. So you guys do not align with the League of Oregon Cities regarding when the term of your council actually begins. And this one has tripped me up on, on a number of occasions. So, under your current charter language, it says the term of the new counselors begins immediately after election is certified by the county elect. So that happens sometime in December. You know, we're not able to say when exactly it happens. But it always sneaks up on me, I'll tell you. And most cities have the terms start the first meeting in January, the year following the election. And that gives you guys the opportunity to plan for that transition. Or would give you the opportunity to plan for that transition. So the elections are certified in December, any election challenges, any vote recounts, those are all taken care of. And then everybody knows that the term has a set day and time. And so it is a small recommendation, but I think it would really help with efficiency and your transition.
Any questions?
Okay. Um, so a small amendment there. The next one is filling vacancies. And this one is a little bit more of, of a meatier amendment that the committee is proposing. And this issue has, has come up across the state a number of times in, in the last year or two. And, um, I want to make sure that you are aware of this issue. And if you would like, the council would like to make changes about how you would deal with this particular circumstance, you fully consider that. So your charter has a quorum requirement, which means the minimum number of counselors present at a meeting to do any. And your quorum is defined as the majority of the council positions. So the amount of counselors you need present to hold a meeting is four. And that is regardless of whether or not you have any vacancies. So if you have five counselors instead of seven, your quorum number doesn't change. It, it stays at four because it's the majority of the council positions. So if there are too few seated counselors to reach a quorum, the charter doesn't provide any guidance and you can't do any city business. So in that case, one of two different provisions of state law clicks in. If all the seats are empty, so if you guys have no seated city counselors, the state law provides that the county board of commissioners will come in and appoint a quorum of your. And so you have, you basically delegated authority to another unit of government to, to appoint a quorum of your council. If only some seats are empty, but you do have some counselors still remaining in their seats. So let's say that you have three counselors rather than four. You can call a special election to fill that one seat. But no matter what, that election is, there's going to be a lag time. And during that lag time, the city council can't meet and conduct any business. And then it's likely not going to align with the county's election schedule. And so the city would be responsible for, um, funding that election. So this most recently came up in Baker City, Oregon. Maybe some of you have been following that, but four of the city's seven counselors resigned for different reasons. And the remaining three counselors were faced with this, you know, conundrum of how to face, how to deal with this issue. And they ended up having the remaining three counselors resign. So that triggered the provisional law that says the county board of commissioners will appoint a quorum of city counselors. And so the Baker County Board of Commissioners then appointed four people to the Baker City Councils so they could do business. Interestingly, um, the board of county commissioners didn't appoint any of the ones who addressed the reason. So the committee found, uh, you know, the committee talked about the provisions of state law and the fact that if, if this situation was to happen at the city of Forest Grove, unless you have charter provisions in place to address it, you're going to be the backstop of the state. So we went over a lot of different ways to, to address this issue. And a lot of cities address it through the quorum provision of your charter. And essentially what they say is that the quorum adjusts with your seated number of councilors. And that is a way to address it. The downside to that is that there's no guardrails on it. And then what you have is a consolidation of power in a minority of counselors and no real limits on, well, some limits, but, um, they can make all sorts of decisions on behalf of the city. They can't pass any ordinances because they won't have the requisite number to pass ordinances. But they can pass resolutions, they can pass motions and they can take other actions. So we, the council, or I'm sorry, the committee talked about the fact that they would like to address this situation, but not create that situation where they consolidate power in a minority of counselors and don't, don't have any guardrails on. So the process of the proposed amendment is that when we're at the actual filling of vacancy language, there is a carve-out, and I'm going to see if I have this language. So there's a carve-out on your charter language when it comes to filling vacancies. And it says a mayor or councillor vacancy will not be filled, will not be filled by appointment by a majority of, will be filled by a majority of, by appointment by a majority of the remaining council members, notwithstanding any quorum or voting requirements of the charter. So what that is intended to say is that for this one vote only, for only the vote to appoint people to your council, you can have less than a quorum and you don't need a majority of quorum to actually just make that one decision. So a minority of counselors aren't allowed to pass resolutions or do anything except make this decision, which is to appoint additional counselors. So the other, and I'm going to go through this, I'm sure there's going to be some questions about that. The other thing we talked about is once counselors are appointed, under your current charter, they fill the remaining term of whatever councillor vacated the seat. So I think you've had situations where somebody, you know, was appointed, or I'm sorry, was elected into city council and then they vacated their seat within the first year. And so an appointed member of council then serves three and a half years. Other cities, to use the language that the committee is recommending, that says the employee's term of office shall begin immediately upon appointment and qualification and shall continue to the first council meeting of the year immediately after the next general election. So if you get appointed in the first year before your term, your appointment is until the next general election. And then that general election is for the end of the term. So it's not a four-year term, it's two years. So that means that you don't have, that you keep all the counselors on the same rotation, that somebody is only appointed for a maximum of two. And then the last, um, change that the committee is recommending for this is actually something that's already been incorporated into your, into your municipal code now, is that the council must adopt by ordinance a process for appointing members to vacant council positions. So to have that in the charter to make sure that you always have a process that's outlined. And one of the other, um, points that the city, or I'm sorry, that the charter review commission would like you to consider is as part of those appointment rules, making sure that appointment is for, is on a single councillor basis, that you're not appointing a slate of counselors. To again, sort of, uh, address potential abuse of that one, one instance where you can take action without a quorum. So with that, I'll, I'll take questions.
Okay, Councilor Rippe.
I've got two questions. First of all, the first sentence there, let me make sure I understand. Is it will or will not be filled?
I, I'm pretty sure it's will, I think that is.
All right. Then the second question I have has to do with the second paragraph. And I understand completely what you're trying to say, the next general election. My only question has to do with, right now, we are set up that there's, uh, every two years it's four and three. But if, if this happens, we could get out of balance where it might be five and two or. So how do you ensure that that balance doesn't?
Great question. It's one that we talked about. And that's why the second part is only a two-year. So they're going to, you're going to stay on the same page instance. So if, if somebody is, if you get appointed in the second two years of the term, then you just write out those, those last two years of the original term. And then it's an election for a four-year term. But if you get appointed in the first two years, you just are appointed for the next general election. The seat is for a two-year term. And then, you know, maybe you get elected to that two-year term, maybe somebody else does, but it's just two years. So your seat never gets out of order.
So I had a follow-up question similar to that. So I'm just wondering within Washington County elections and the work that the staff has to do for the election. So we're all at large, right? So how, I'm getting really ticky-tacky and in the weeds. But how do people, how do the voters know that you vote? Because you vote for your three, right? You vote at large for three positions. So this would be three, would that be a separate?
It would be a separate, like, it'd be like the mayor, the mayor's separate from the rest of.
This would be like appointed position for this two terms. And then, so this, so then instead of running at large, people would go in to the city recorder's office and say, hey, I want to just run for this two-year term. I'm running for a four, you see, I'm like trying to play this out.
It's a great question, but yes, that's exactly how it works. Like on a year that it's a mayor electoral year, there would be the mayor's position, the regular city council positions, and then this two-year.
That's how you keep your balance.
And then another question I had is, I thought we had. At, so we've, since I've been on council, we've done three appointments. And we always use the same process. And I thought we had an ordinance in a process for appointing. And so when I see that emboldened, I'm like, are we not?
No, you do. And we talked about this, um, but now we're adding it as a charter requirement. So you don't, this is something that you already do, just incorporate that requirement into.
Okay. Councilor Ewing, did you have your hand raised?
So I have to say that I'm not tracking completely here. So you're saying that, yeah, the ballot comes out, you're specifically, it will be called out on the ballot and appointed position?
No, so it would be like you run for mayor and you have the people that are running for mayor. And then, you know, the next option is all the people who are running for four-year city council seats. And then you have a separate race for that two-year, or for that two-year position.
But it's still elected, it's just.
And so somebody can choose, like, it would be a choice that, let's say that I want to run for city council that year. I can either choose to put my, my name in the hat for the four-year full term or I could choose to put my name in the hat for the two.
So just playing devil's advocate. I mean, just as someone who's gone through the election process, like, I don't know why anyone would run for the two-year when you have to buy signs, get signatures, like all the work, right? So if that two-year, if no one runs for the two-year position, then what happens?
Appointment usually.
So then can we reappoint the person we appointed?
As long as there are not any terms or other, other.
You see what I'm saying? Because I, I'm just like trying to think, like, yeah, I think the idea, I totally understand the idea. I just think that, like in, in action of knowing how much work it takes and putting yourself out there, like, I guess if no one else is running for the two-year term and you don't want to run against, I don't.
It might be an opportunity for.
I think you're going to actually have people that want the two-year and not commit the four-year.
Oh, maybe. That's true. I mean, four years is a lot. Well, I guess we'll see, we'll, we'll discuss this later. Sorry, I forgot it in the discussion.
Any other questions?
Any other questions about vacancies? Seeing none.
Um, I'm prising through. So the last, um, the last, I would say, like, minor recommendation that we have is just updating, um, the reasons for disqualification or declaring a vacancy of city counselors. Um, the language that you currently have is that, um, the council may declare a seat vacant when a public, when a seated city councillor commits any public offense punishable by loss of liberty. The committee is recommending that we align with the League of Oregon City Mob Charter language and instead, um, move to, um, conviction of a misdemeanor or felony crime. So that's the change. Um, we also looked at the League of Oregon Cities as a provision that says that you can declare this, a seat vacant if somebody has been absent for, absent for all meetings for sixty days. You currently have a more stringent requirement of, um, you can't be absent for, for all the meetings within a forty-five day period. This is one of the instances that we are not recommending that you align with the League of Oregon City Mob Charter and keep your more stringent forty-five day requirement. Any questions about that?
Any questions about this section? Councilor Rippe.
Was there any discussion about the thirty-day requirement? For you have to, you can't be absent for more than thirty days outside the city?
There was a lot of discussion about what it means to be absent. And the application of the thirty days and the forty-five days. Yes. I would say that the general consensus, and I'm going to let Alicia tell me if I'm wrong, is that, you know, thinking about whether or not it's a charter issue versus an issue that can be addressed through a couple of rules or, um, other ways that aren't as inflexible as the charter, is that issues regarding absences and what constitutes an absence is best left to, uh, the other means.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Ewing.
So having had, uh, changes in my mind over the past few years, is there a clearer or a better word? Because to me, if your presidency is doomed or you're sitting in the seat, you're doing your assignments, but most people, when they think absent, they think that you're not in it. It, was there any discussion about that? Or what might better? Was there any discussion about that term or what might better?
Give you a break. Just give you a break. This was, this was a really tough, tough subject for us, lots of factors to consider. But I, you know, when we were looking at the absent piece, there was a lot of discussion around it, and that was really the best term, because there's, there's so many different variations of what that could mean, right? To what you're saying, that by clearly defining it in here, we're potentially creating those unintended consequences.
So you're suggesting then to define it better in some other.
Correct. So some of, some of the things in the charter are intentionally left broad, so we are not putting ourselves in a predicament.
And a follow-up. When you're talking about disabled, so that kind of sets my ears off, because when it's referred to here, I don't know again if that identifies somebody as still not being able, because it's so, I am disabled, I have that commutation. Does that mean that I can't serve? Because I have been determined as disabled, unable. So again, I get what you're saying, that needs probably be more defined in our council rules instead of such a permanent status in the charter. I'm just having problems with those two being used as a sign of, like, how some might not be.
Counselor Gustafson.
I wanted to support Counselor Ewing's comment about disability. No disability, in my opinion, should ever restrict somebody from being able to serve. I am also designated as disabled, and same situation as far as being able to attend in person or not. So I, I think we need to really be very, very careful when we talk about disability and being able to serve.
Can someone, where is that language at?
There was a page prior to this that mentioned disability.
I was like trying to.
Really?
I didn't see it either.
That was up there, I noticed that.
Same.
Well, I agree with it, because I'm also considered disabled.
I'm not familiar with that reference. But the issues regarding what it means to be absent were discussed, and again, that's one of those words that we don't have, we don't have any proposed amendments, because the charter needs to be flexible. And, you know, if, you know, who could have anticipated the pandemic where everybody went remote? If we had had language in there that restricted, you know, that you had to be in person, that would have been a situation where we would have been out of line. So after discussing this, we, the committee agreed, keep the language open in it and allow some of the.
Any further questions? Is there another section?
There is. It's ranked choice voting. It is not one that you guys asked the committee to review. We did spend a good amount of time on it. I'll go over it incredibly quickly here, because I know that we're at some time constraints. The committee is very interested in ranked choice voting for the city to consider in the future. Ranked choice voting requires that voters rank candidates by preference.
Can we switch the slide so we can?
Instead of, instead of just a one candidate preference, there are a lot of intricacies to what exact method of ranked choice voting you would use, especially when a setup like the City of Forest Grove, where you're not just electing one position, but you elect, you know, a number, three different, you select three people for your council every two years, which means that you would actually, if you use the same system that's in place now, you would not have traditional ranked choice voting, proportional voting. This is best explained via some videos that we watched as, as a committee. So I think I'll just say, and by saying that, ranked choice voting is on the statewide ballot in November of 2024. It's a change in law that authorizes, although we know cities already have the authorization under home rule, authorized cities to implement ranked choice voting programs at their city. And under, if the, if the measure passes, the funding would be taken care of at the state level. If you guys started a ranked choice voting system at the local level, you would be responsible for a lot of the costs associated with education about what rank is and the particular system that you do. So the committee is definitely interested in pursuing it, but perhaps after the November 2024 election, and also how your charter is written, so you don't actually have to amend your charter to be able to implement ranked choice voting. City of Forest Valley did ranked choice voting by ordinance, and you guys also have that requirement.
Um, I, I think just really the big thing, it was attractive to all of us, just because going back to that equity piece, it, it really allows you to have your vote represented well. Say, I don't really like this person, this is my second choice, this is my third choice. But again, we're not there yet, because it is technically still a pretty new thing. Not, not many states have adopted it, so we don't have a lot of data, and it would be costly to implement at the time, so.
Any questions about ranked choice voting?
It takes a lot more research on that.
Yeah.
Videos are great.
I would just really like to thank the Charter Review Committee, Chair Johnson, Ashley. This is a lot of work, a lot of effort. The, the meeting minutes were always really well-done too, Joyce. So thank you for the time, the consideration, and the really just thoughtful conversation and recommendations.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's great.
So can I adjourn this work? Do you have, do you need anything from us? This was just to give us information, and we'll have a work session probably later to discuss some of these things. Okay, cool. Well, thank you so much. I'm going to adjourn this work session. I would like to call to order this meeting of the Forest Grove City Council on Monday, April 22nd, 2024. Will our city recorder please call, roll?
Council President Rippey?
Here.
Counselor Gustafson?
Here.
Counselor Martinez?
Here.
Counselor Marshall?
Here.
Counselor Valenzuela?
Absent.
Counselor Ewing?
Here.
Mayor Wenzel?
Here.
Forest Grove City Council meetings are located on the, on the land of the Toallatin Kalapuas, who call themselves the Apalati. They are now a part of the Confederate tribes of Grand Ron. Will the audience and council please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is my favorite meeting of the year. Is this on? Yes. Because this is the meeting where we get to recognize our youth who did If I Were Mayor contest posters, essays, and videos. So on our screen, we have Ms. Peyton Edwards, a high school student. I'm going to read a little bit about her. She is a sophomore. She has some siblings. Her favorite school subjects are history, culinary, and English. She's involved in track and cross-country. And Peyton is very artistic. She enjoys drawing, painting, and being creative. She's attending via Zoom, so if we could all say hi. Peyton, can you hear us? Okay, well, congratulations. You won the PowerPoint presentation, first prize winner, and we have your money and prize at the city auditorium. Do we know how she's going to get that? We will figure out a way. I can put it, maybe we'll send it through the school, through the school email, but congratulations, Peyton. Thanks for participating. What will happen is your PowerPoint will be sent to the state, the OMA Board, and they'll be judged with other entries in your category. So good luck. Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to our middle school winners. Our second-place winner for the essay competition was Erin Garrett. Will Erin Garrett please come up? Here is your award and prize. Congratulations. In your spare time, you like to play Pokemon, and you like, which Teenage Mutant Ninja Turtle is your favorite? Leonardo, I like it. Congratulations to Erin. Our first-place winner for the essay competition is Ren Mollcaster. Can Ren come up, please? Ren is fierce. Ren plays ice hockey and acrobatics, so multi-talented, and a good writer as well. Thank you. Your essay will go to the state, too. Okay, cool. Congratulations. Thank you. So back for a second time, who, I think she's now a fifth grader, is Ainsley Stevie. Can Ainsley come up? Ainsley, this is her second time up here, and she leads with compassion and caring, and she's going to be a great mayor. Congratulations. You're welcome. Okay, in second place, Mr. Lincoln Rujie Arrow. Can you come up? Did I say your name right? So Lincoln has a poster in the little foyer area, and for every month, he has an idea of how you can celebrate and the cool things you can do in Forest Grove. Is Cyrus, I'm looking for Cyrus Osborn. Come on up. Congratulations. Okay, so Cyrus, I did my State of the City speech today, and I looked at your poster, and I was like, did he, did he write my State of the City? He has transportation, public safety, inclusion, sidewalks. He did a really good job. So check out the posters in the hallway and give a big round of applause for these young leaders. Congratulations. Really good job. Yeah, you can take. Okay, we're going to move on to proclamations. Do we want to do a group photo, Stephanie, of the winners? Okay, if we could have all the winners. Can you get Peyton in the?
Get Peyton in the picture.
There you go. You got Peyton in there, Jesse? All right, good. The next item on our agenda is proclamations. Yeah, if you don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting, you don't have to. I mean, it's really exciting. Lots of good stuff. Okay, in public comments, you can, during public comments, we're going to do proclamations. The next agenda item I'll call you. Okay, you're welcome. Okay, so, um, hang on a minute. I gotta find. Okay. Proclamation, National Small Business Week. Whereas America's strongest economic growth in almost 40 years has been driven by the resilience of our small businesses that, despite a worldwide pandemic, continue to pioneer innovative solutions to our country's greatest challenges and create opportunities for family and workers. And whereas small businesses remain the heartbeat of our communities and the American economy, employing more than half of our nation's workers, inventing and innovating to launch new technologies and create new American-led industries, enriching our main streets, making parts and products in America to fuel our supply chains, and building our nation's infrastructure, and whereas the City of Forest Grove recognizes the values and dedication and entrepreneurial spirit of small businesses that are the cornerstone of our local and state economy. And whereas the City of Forest Grove supports and joins in this national effort to recognize and support small businesses to ensure that our community remains as vibrant tomorrow as they are today. So now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Forest Grove does hereby proclaim April 28th through May 4th, 2024, as National Small Business Week. In Forest Grove, Oregon, Washington County, and urge all citizens to acknowledge and celebrate the achievements made by small businesses locally and nationally. Okay, our second proclamation tonight is to celebrate Arbor Day 2024 and Forest Grove's 34th anniversary as Tree City USA. So whereas Arbor Day was first observed in 1872 with the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska, and the Forest Grove community continues the tradition of environmental stewardship by conserving, preserving, and restoring our local urban forests. And whereas our community appreciates the many benefits trees provide to our residents, businesses, and visitors. And whereas the National Arbor Day Foundation has recognized Forest Grove as a Tree City USA due to our community's commitments to effective forest, forest management over the last year. And whereas calendar year 2023 marked the 34th consecutive year Forest Grove, sorry, has received Tree City USA designation. And whereas the Forest Grove Community Forestry Commission recognizes the stewardship of the Forest Grove community over the last 34 years to advance the city's urban forestry efforts. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Forest Grove does hereby proclaim as follows. Section one. April is hereby proclaimed as Arbor Month in Forest Grove. Section two. The Forest Grove community is encouraged to support the spirit and tradition of the first Arbor, the first Arbor Day by planting trees for the benefit of our community. Thank you. Hold up the proclamation? Okay, I was like, Dan, why am I holding? Okay, so now we are ready to move on to item B on our agenda, which is public comment. Time provided for anyone wishing to speak to city council on an item not on the agenda or on the agenda but not scheduled for a public hearing. Comments are limited to two minutes unless additional time is granted by the presiding officer. The public comment period shall not exceed 30 minutes unless a majority of counselors present vote to extend the time. Zoom attendees may use the raise hand feature to be called up. Okay, is there anyone who wishes to give public comment? Please come up, sir. State your name and address for the record.
I'm a long-time resident, retired small business owner. I planted over 30 trees in my property.
Thank you.
I received a notification of a data center to be built behind my house. And my question is, first off, how was this decision made with the location of this site right in a neighborhood, right near the S-square, right in the wetland? These are 70-foot tall concrete buildings that are going to completely mask my view and my whole neighborhood. They spew electromagnetic, magnetic energy, a great amount of heat, tremendous amount of noise. a great amount of heat, tremendous amount of noise, right on the flight path of the heat going into the estuary that use that field right now. Of course, my own personal interest is my property value is gonna plummet. So, as this goes along, I'd like to know how the neighborhood's gonna be compensated for these people that are ruining the environment in my neighborhood. Who's responsible for the decision? This was, this was listed as a proposal. I don't know how far along that proposal is. I did look into, South Seattle has a data center located conveniently in the core business district. I looked up a data center in Texas across the freeway from a neighborhood. They're outraged. So, my first question is, how was the site? And who decided to put it?
So, what we can do for you is if you would leave your email address, we can have staff or council follow up with you to answer your questions. But during the public comment portion, we don't typically have a conversation back and forth. So.
Is it a done deal? They said proposal. Is the financing arranged? Do they have the power capabilities with all the backup and everything necessary to do this?
Yeah.
About $4 billion?
I feel more comfortable having staff respond to your questions and having communication that way. And if that doesn't work out for you, then definitely call me or email me and.
So there's, you can't even tell me if it's a proposal or if it's a plan?
No. I tend to not comment on land juice. Yes. But I don't, we're.
I'm sorry, I thought this was public forums, so I could ask one question. Is there a timeline? Is it a plan or is it a proposal? And who decides? I can give you my email address and just wait for somebody to get back to me. But I tell you all right now, I want an answer. May I have that? Do people realize what they're doing? This is just pure greed. Don't you understand? This is an environmental disaster. There's a farm over right across the street from Yale Armstrong Middle. And it's got quite a little five-acre farm. And these two five-story buildings have to be in any corner like this. And my friend's farm will be looking at nothing but concrete walls. And we have open land forever. Put it out somewhere. Don't put it in my backyard, please.
Thank you for your public comment. Any additional public comment? Anyone on Zoom who would like to give public comment? Seeing none, we'll move to item C on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will all be adopted with a single motion without separate discussion. Councillors who wish to remove an item from the consent agenda may do so prior to the motion. Any items removed will be discussed and acted upon following the approval of the remaining items. What is the wish of the council?
Move to approve.
The consent agenda was moved by councillor Marshall and seconded by councillor Ewing. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say aye. Hearing none, the consent agenda is passed by the Forest Grove City Council in a vote of six to zero. Item D on the agenda, additions and deletions. City manager, are there any additions or deletions?
There are no additions or deletions. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Any additions or deletions proposed by councillors? Seeing none, we're gonna move to item E on our agenda, which is presentations. The council will hold questions until the end of each presentation. A two-minute reminder will be given to the presenter to conclude remarks. So, we have our city attorney, Ms. Ashley Driscoll, who's going to present on elected officials and the use of social media.
Good evening, city council, city attorney Ashley Driscoll. The city asked me to give the council a brief update after a recent Supreme Court decision in Linky v. Freed. I'm gonna really quickly go over some background, some background information, get into the facts of the case, the holding, and then what we can expect from here. So, this is a First Amendment case. The gist of it is it provides a new test for elected officials' use of social media. So, of course, the place that we're gonna start is with the First Amendment. The First Amendment prohibits governments, which is states, federal government and city, from prohibiting free speech. The 1983 Civil Rights Act says that you can sue individuals for violating your First Amendment rights, but only if the act of that individual can be attributed to the government. You can sue an individual for violation of your First Amendment rights so long as that individual's acts on behalf of the government. So, if an individual's actions are not attributable to the government, then no First Amendment violation can occur. So, the question in front of the court is, when is, when is an individual's actions attributable to the government? So, getting into the facts of this case. In this case, there was a city manager, Freed, who had a Facebook page in which he posted things both about his professional life and about his personal life. His Facebook page identified him as a city manager and was public. So, individuals within the community, not just those who were his friends, could access his, his account. So, Linky was a member of the community that had some conflicting opinions with Mr. Freed. And Mr. Linky would often comment on Mr. Freed's Facebook posts. So, at first, Freed decided that, that he did not like Mr. Linky's comments, and he became, began to delete them when he would post on, on his Facebook account. And then he went ahead and blocked him entirely from being able to comment on his Facebook account. So, Linky sued Freed, claiming that Freed's act of blocking him was attributable to the city and violated Linky's First Amendment rights. So, essentially, what he's saying is that Mr. Freed, as the city manager, had a Facebook account that was, you know, tied into his profession as the city manager enough that it count, that his posts on there counted as state action. So, this went through the circuit courts. It went up to the United States Supreme Court late last year, and we got a decision on this in March. And it actually settled a circuit split, the Ninth Circuit. And I believe the Sixth Circuit also had tests about when, when an individual's actions were attributable to the government. And the Supreme Court provided a new test for us to apply. So, when a public official prevents somebody from commenting on social media, their actions are attributable to the government when? First, the public official possessed the actual authority to speak on the government's behalf on that particular topic. So, just to take that one, the person speaking has actual authority to speak on behalf of the government on that particular topic. And then, second, the public official purported to have used that authority when making the social media post. So, both the actual authority to do it and then use the actual authority when making the post. So, breaking this down a little bit, what does it mean to possess the actual authority? The government official that have made the post, that is something within their, and I quote, bailiwick. And that has to be based on statute, ordinance, regulation, custom, or usage. So, I mean, I think the easy one, so written law, past practice of the state official are permanent and well-settled, that they carry the force of law. So, an example, I think, applicable to the Forest Grove City Council, if the council authorizes a specific councillor to speak on behalf of the council, that councillor possesses the actual authority to do so. A custom that, for instance, or another example is a custom that a public works director sends out notifications about road closures. That person has the actual authority to close roads. That person possesses the actual authority. However, a single councillor, without council authorization, gives an interview about council policies or a council position. That person is not possessing the actual authority to speak on that particular issue because the council has not authorized them to do so. The same would be true if that councillor was giving his or her personal opinion. So, you have to have the actual authority to speak on that topic. And then the second part of that test is whether you purport to have used that actual authority. This means that the public official must have presented themselves as speaking in their official capacity or in furtherance of their official position. So, you have the actual authority, and then you are actually using that authority. Simply posting something on your Facebook wall or on your social media, social media account, even if you have the actual authority, doesn't mean that you are using it in that venue, if that makes sense. So, compare a mayor at a council meeting announcing a new city council policy on behalf of the council. He's at the council meeting, he's declaring the council policy on behalf of the city. That is him using his official authority. That same mayor is at a barbecue over the weekend, and he tells his friends about the council policy that he just enacted the night before. That second instance, he is not using his actual authority, even if he had it. So, let's apply this to social media accounts. If you have a social media account that is solely personal or solely official, I think this is pretty easy. So, if you mark your social media account as your personal social and media account, and you don't do any of your city business on that account, anything you post on there will not be considered state action, and you do not open yourself up to any First Amendment retaliation claims for blocking or deleting people who you do not want to post on your comments. However, your official social media account, the one tied to your position, that is going to be presumed to be government action. If you have a, you know, councillor Ashley Driscoll Facebook account, and that's where you post all of your official business, that is gonna be seen as a government Facebook account, and therefore, the First Amendment would be applicable to that. So, I would advise, I would take, I would advise against blocking or deleting people from that specific account. If you have a mixed personal and official social media accounts, it's harder to distinguish when you are posting and using your actual authority as a city councillor to disseminate news. And in that case, deleting and blocking people from an account that is mixed carries substantially more risk. You're gonna have to do an individual assessment on each one of your posts to determine if you're, you know, meeting the test. Do you have the actual authority? And are you purporting to use that actual authority in making those decisions about who you can block and what kind of comments you can delete? I would, I would note that this helps. As I mentioned at the beginning, it helps solve a split within the districts, the Sixth and Ninth. And now that the Supreme Court has articulated this test, the Supreme Court has sent back to the Sixth and Ninth Circuits two different cases regarding elected officials' use of social media. Those circuits, the Sixth and Ninth, will then have to apply this new test. And through the application of this test from the Supreme Court, we'll be able to answer more of the nuances of question, more than the nuanced questions regarding how this test is going to apply. So, I think the bottom line here is that the Supreme Court articulated a stricter test for determining something, determining blocking or deleting somebody from a social media account is actually a violation of their First Amendment rights. However, I still think that there's a good amount of risk if you have a mixed social media account and you would like to block or delete people from accessing that account. So, that is a summary of that recent case. I think that we will probably hear more about this as the Ninth Circuit case gets resolved under that new test.
Questions? Councillor Ewing?
Thank you. It's still a bit ambiguous, which is not surprising. So, if there's a disclaimer that we often use when we're communicating, which is that, you know, please do not respond, oh, this is my personal opinion, not that of the city. Would you advise that we continue to use that methodology in reporting out conversations or reporting out information? That's my first question. I have a couple.
Yes, I still would advise that both on First Amendment, and I believe that also complies with provisions of the council rules.
Thank you. So, if, if somehow this goes awry, what is the legal implications, the risks, the ramifications if an individual is using? I guess what it comes down to is, what can we do as a council? What are the laws and the rules if this is violated?
I think in the wake of these cases, there are going to be more guidance regarding, guidance and policies from city governments regarding use of social media accounts. I think the, kind of the summary of advice that I gave during, during the presentation is good, which is to not have a mixed account. You know, to have a personal account and to have a city business account. And then, you know, mark them as such, and then, you know, treat them as such. So, don't do an official announcement through your personal page and vice versa.
Thank you for that good advice. My last question is, is if somebody is appointed to speak for the council, given the authority to, does that have to come through the whole body to be agreed upon? Or is that just one individual saying, yeah, you have the authority?
So, in order for the, a member of council to speak on behalf of council, council action has to, the council has to authorize that either through an individual motion or delegating authority of a certain kind to an individual.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Ashley. Our next presentation this evening is the Economic Development Commission Annual Report. And we have our EDC chair. I'm afraid I'm gonna mess up your last name. Is it Tim Beutelmann? Boom. Let's go.
It's been a while since I've done this. So, councillors, mayor.
Hello.
Thank you very much. This will be fairly brief. We all know what the purpose of the Economic Development Commission is. We've helped city council and different business leaders making decisions on how to grow the economy of Forest Grove, which has been purportedly for several years, one of the fastest-growing cities in the state. Thankfully, to a lot of efforts between Miles, his predecessors, Jeff King, the longest-serving person that I had a pleasure of working with for well over 12 years. Worked a lot with tourism, worked a lot with Washington County, a lot with different organizations to try and build Forest Grove to what it is right now. The EDC serves to make recommendations to city council on different policies that they may or may not enact that would benefit the community and the growth of the community. A lot of the volunteer efforts, we've been charged with helping advise with the Urban Renewal Advisory. And that committee then rolled into the Economic Development Commission, which a lot of the folks at the EDC were very thrilled to do, just as a natural fit. We went over a lot of the bylaws. And we had Commissioner Therese and Senior Planner Dan Gordon. Sorry. He gave some great advice and some great knowledge to what's been going on in terms of the different transportation issues and development things that have been going on in the city. Volunteer efforts, Building Improvement Program, the Enterprise Zone fee structure, and the Main Street program, which I'll give a little bit more in-depth at the end. Looking ahead, we're looking forward to adding some folks that have not been a part of the EDC to maintain our numbers. We have 2040 vision planning that we've been working towards. And we're pretty excited about that. It's, it's not unlike what the city of Hillsborough has done and did some 10 years ago. Economic opportunity analysis and updating the economic development strategy. Economic Opportunity Analysis and updating the economic development strategy. Some of the items of note from the previous slide, the Building Improvement Program, city council directed staff to seek EDC input on the design of the program, offered a variety of input on the initial design of the program, which were incorporated into that program, which was presented to the Urban Renewal Agency. Discussed many items such as maximum funding amounts, program rollouts and metrics that we're still constantly evaluating and as that comes out, it's going to be kind of a moving target to where we see what impacts that has on the community, how we need to adjust accordingly. Recommend that the URA adopt a Building Improvement Grant Program. In the Enterprise Zone Fee Structure, we've worked with staff to update the three-year Enterprise Zone Fee from its previous rate of 200 to a percentage of the overall project cost. This change kept the program in line with surrounding communities similar to ours. Made a recommendation to change the city policy to city council that was adopted. In the Main Street Program, staff briefed the commission on that program and the city's history and its next steps. The EDC's recommended the city to pursue.
Okay, any questions? Counselor Ewing?
Hi, thanks for joining us this evening. So if you were able to tell us as a council, one thing that is of concern for EDC economically so that we have an understanding and can begin perhaps preparing, what would that one thing be?
Ah, well, you all may know I'm a commercial real estate broker, so I've got a best interest and I've done a lot of work the last 20 years in Forest Grove. Right now, I think a lot of discussion that's being had right now with Metro is the lack of inventory and not, not to be left unsaid, City of Forest Grove and a lot of municipalities where we have run out of industrial property, which industrial properties, as we know, provide a lot of jobs. And then that also helps retail to office. Forest Grove has a real shortage of office, but there's not a huge need for office, but retailers, small businesses, which is comprised of a lot of the EDC, which we've been a strong proponent of the last 10 years to make sure we had a cross-section of small businesses, retail, large manufacturing, other large businesses to represent each of those needs. So I think a poignant effort to work with county commissioners and Metro to really understand that the initial outset of brand bargain and lack of inventory and the lack of urban and rural reserves was short sighted. I pulled that to Commissioner Therese and several other metro councils as well. You need to do a deeper dive, stay right out. And we, as a result, state lost intel to Ohio, several other companies as well.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Yeah, I, how many vacant positions do you have on EDC right now?
Two.
Only two?
Heard a council rep. I think two.
Okay. Are we doing a recruitment process still for EDC and his, okay. Yeah, that, I'm on that one. It's more than two. I'll just say that. Okay, great. Thank you so much for coming.
My pleasure.
Okay, item E3 is our Community Forest Commission Annual Report and I have the CFC Chair, Justin Marble and Dan Reardon coming up to present.
My pleasure to, to Justin Marble.
A new chair.
Newly elected chair, former longtime chair of the City of Forest Grove. He still is in the leadership role there. Since this is Justin's very first, he has the annual, after he carries the water.
Thank you. All right. The following community members have graciously volunteered their time and provided their expertise to help support the city's urban forestry efforts. Myself, Justin Marble, Mark Nakuma, Vice Chair Bruce Countryman, Sean English, who is our student liaison, Michael Howell, David Hunter and Kathy Walden are new. So during 2023, we continued with our Tree City USA designation for the 34th consecutive year. We also held a tree planting event in April 2023 in Talisman Park, planting two trees there in the park to commemorate Arbor Month. Next slide, please. During the event, a tree was planted in honor of the late Ronald Thompson, who served as council's liaison to the CFC for many years. In early 2023, the Community Development Department directed the planting of 140 street trees in the city's new subdivision. And in May 2023, a city council, city council passed ordinance 2023-03 that in part amended the development code to require tree root barriers at time of street. Okay, so another big issue that we have going on, a continual thing that we're kind of tracking and addressing is Emerald Ash Bore. We have been monitoring that and participating in efforts to slow the spread. Department of Agriculture has been kind of spearheading that in our area along with Department of Forestry. And here are some, some pictures showing the different signs that you would see if your tree was affected with Emerald Ash Bore. Next slide, please. The 2024 Work Program for the Community Forestry Commission includes holding a tree planting event during April to commemorate National Arbor Day in Oregon's Arbor Month and then to present the annual Arbor Day proclamation during tonight's city council. That's what that was about. And the 2024 Work Program for the CFC includes, we are evaluating the downtown street trees to resolve problems, including lifting grates, lifting concrete and some trees that are declining or have other reasons that they may need work or be removed. We are preparing and submitting the annual Tree City USA recertification and application for approval by the Oregon Department of Forestry and National Arbor Day Council. And we are going to continue to monitor the Emerald Ash Bore. Thank you, council. Any questions?
Did you, did you guys already plant the tree this April at the park?
We did, yeah.
Which, which park was that at?
We planted at Joseph Gale Park, right next to Joseph Gale.
Yeah.
And we planted two trees, a ponderosa pine and a western red cedar, one right by the playground and then the other by one of the ball fields.
Cool.
And the kids were there for us, it was an excellent time.
Well, that's great. Any other questions?
Those two trees, those two trees, one was for Ron and one was for TJ. Is that correct or are you planning to do one for TJ? I understood it, sorry if I got it wrong, was that the two trees, one would be dedicated to Ron and one would be dedicated to TJ? Did I get that right?
The, the year before was the tree dedicated to Ron in Talisman Park in 2023.
I'm unaware of the dedication to TJ. I don't think there was that.
Like I said, I just thought the conversation was that that would be, there would be two trees, one, council members. So the second question I have is on the Emerald Ash Bore. You had some pretty good pictures of what a tree might look like if it were diseased. Is this something that we could maybe get on the website under C, under the Forestry Commission so that more people are aware because isn't it better to catch it early rather than waiting for, does it move from tree to tree?
And there's a lot of efforts that have already been done regarding that. In fact, mailers were sent out, I believe by, what, did the city do that or did ODA do that?
We're going to burn bad reports. We just requested that anyone in. Certainly the Oregon Department of Agriculture.
Counselor President Rippey?
Several weeks ago, Councilor Valenzuela had mentioned something about students over in Cornelius.
Yeah, through the Centro.
Through Centro, having something to do with the Emerald Ash Bore and education process. Are you aware of that?
I'm unaware of that.
You're not aware of it? You're not aware of it?
No, that the Oregon Department of Agriculture. Emerald Ash Bore, three of them.
And what's the approximate number of trees that we've had removed so far in the city?
The last year, the Oregon Department of Agriculture funded the removal.
Thank you.
Basically 100, 150 or so altogether.
No, the, the movement of trees. We're doing it outside.
Any additional questions? Seeing none. Thanks, gentlemen. I appreciate the update. Okay, we're going to now move on to item F, which are public hearings, ordinances and resolutions. Our first resolution is number 2024-12, approving adoption of City of Forest Grove Parks and Recreation Patron Code of Conduct Policy. And I think that, is Ann going to do it online?
Ann's walking in right now.
Oh, okay. I saw her online for a while and then.
I saw her walk in, but maybe towards the ladies.
Yeah, we're 15. No, that's good. Yeah, proclamation, got us. That was amazing. Right? I love it. So I'll let you get settled and I'll restate the, it's resolution 2024-12, approving the adoption of City of Forest Grove Parks and Recreation Patron Code of Conduct Policy. And we will now hear from Ann for our staff report.
Thank you. Thank you for your time this evening, mayor and council. Tonight's agenda item is follow-up to the April 8th work session regarding adoption and implementation of a Parks and Recreation Patron Code of Conduct Policy. At the April 8th work session, it was decided unanimously by council that the policy be presented for adoption by resolution at this evening's meeting. Resolution 2024-12, resolution approving adoption of City of Forest Grove Parks and Recreation Patron Code of Conduct Policy has been included in your packet as well as policy.
Are there any questions for staff? We had a work session about this last meeting too. Okay, Counselor Ewing?
So, Ann, I have kind of a request because it, for some reason, they come through me, I think it's because my husband's there. But regardless, I've asked them to actively now begin using the website for concerns and comments rather than using me as their vehicle. One of the things, when I read it, could we possibly do a posting on your door? Because there are folks that don't have access technology-wise and those different things. Could we possibly do, when you're going to be closed, your closures, a few days before that closure? Because I get a lot of grunting from people that show up and you guys are working and doing diligent work, but the pool isn't available. So if we could do that, that would be really helpful. And then can we possibly discuss how to get that code of conduct out to more of our users? Because again, technology is wonderful, but, and I know that I got the full page from my husband, but is there a better way to get that code of conduct out so people aren't surprised?
I think we'll utilize all of our resources to make sure we can get the message out. Some of that is going to be through social media, et cetera, but it'll also be posted.
Thank you so much.
Counselor President Rippey?
No question, Ann, but another thought would be that if somebody is paying for a membership, that that policy might be included as part of their, when they, when they pay for it so that very upfront, they know what the policy, just a thought.
Any further questions? Okay, what is the wish of the council?
I move that we adopt resolution number 2024-12.
Resolution number 2024-12 was moved by Counselor President Rippey and seconded by Counselor Gustafson. Will the city, city manager, please read the resolution by title only?
Resolution number 2024-12, resolution approving adoption of City of Forest Grove Parks and Recreation Patron Code of Conduct Policy.
Okay, council discussion. I just want to say thank you to Ann. I know that a number, I think two years ago, you actually had an intern from Pacific start to look at this. So I know there's a collaborative process in using our partners at Pacific, using the library's code of conduct and then the Parks and Rec Commission. So I just think that we have a really good product now that came before us in our work session and now a resolution because of the steps you took to make it. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye. Hearing none. Resolution number 2024-12 is approved by the Forest Grove City Council in a vote of six to zero. Thank you, thanks for coming in.
Yeah.
Okay, our second presentation tonight is resolution number 2024-13, approving the City of Forest Grove Light and Power Community Service Program Description for Installation of Informational Street Banners. And we have Keith, who is going to educate us.
All right, good evening, mayor, council. I want to kind of focus my comments tonight on the staff report and I'm more than happy to go over the whole policy with you if you'd like, but I think I can hit the high points here real quick. We've had a banner program in place at Light and Power for over my 30 years. I personally have hung more banners than I can count across the street. So it's been in place for a long time, but recently, these are the street banners that you see. Recently, we've been reviewing another possible program for hanging banners on the light poles. And while we were doing that, we realized the street banner policy had never been approved by city council. So we wanted to bring that to you and look at that tonight. We did take it by CCE to have their, them review it and add any comments. So there was nothing negative that came out of that. Couple of the highlights that I want to touch on though, that we wanted to make sure the policy is, main focus is on local events. That, that's always what it's been in place for, so we wanted to refocus on that. It, the benefits from it, benefits the entire City of Forest Grove. And then we wanted to make sure, to clarify that it only is for nonprofits and local governments located in the city. That was, has always been the main focus of the banner program. And it does clarify if, when, how and where the banners can be installed and it reinserts what banners must promote and what. And it reinserts what banners must promote and what it cannot promote. So we just reviewed everything that we already had in place and made a few, uh, slight changes. And, uh, we have the policy that we're presenting to you tonight. Mayor, I can answer any questions you may have.
Council President Rippey.
Thank you. Again, appreciate all the work you do, Keith. One question I had is u- under the first whereas, we, we are limiting this to local nonprofits and local government. But I'm aware of that a lot of our organizations in town are not quote unquote, uh, nonprofit. They're not certified with the Secretary of State's office as a nonprofit. Are we also allowing those organizations to put up banners?
Uh, we were not.
No, we're not. Is there a reason for that?
The banner program is always designed for their local nonprofits and promoting locally bands. So that was the direction we were trying to continue to go down that path.
Council President Rippey, can you give us example of something you're thinking of that we're missing?
Uh, the, the thought comes to mind, you know, uh, yeah, possibly a, I know it, I know we say that it's non-religious, but if a church is holding a holiday bazaar, for example, that's not promoting the religion, religious belief, but they're also not a nonprofit. And it is event that the city would, you know, people in the city might be interested in, in going to. So, uh, I also don't think that any of the schools programs or schools organizations are nonprofits, unless it's submitted on behalf of the school district. You know, I don't know that the Boosters Club is a nonprofit. So if they have an event, are they gonna be able to put something up? So I, I was just, I, I was just thinking that limiting to nonprofits and local governments might be too restrictive.
Jesse is wanting to answer.
Sorry. I, I believe in those particular examples that you gave, Council Rippey, those, those are nonprofits. Um, under this program, similar to previously, they would have to be registered under, as a, under kind of the umbrella of what's called five oh one A, which could be a C two, three, four, five, six, or seven. So any of those types of nonprofits within that umbrella would qualify. The boosters would qualify. Um, the local church is typically affiliated as a five oh one C three. Um, and, and so I think in those examples, they, they would qualify.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we were considering all that. Thank you.
Councilor Marshall.
What are we gonna define as, uh, local or like within city limit?
That was the direction we were taking, I guess.
Council Ewing, did you have a question as well?
That kind of is my concern because say for instance, Solve comes out, they're not local. Would they then have to be able to have a banner if they went through, I don't know, one of the nonprofits? Um, local kind of is a bit limiting, I think. Uh, we have national organizations, Habitat Humanity, different things like that, um, that have a national affiliation while they have one in town. Uh, there are communities that don't have a particular, um, shall we say, particularly specific, uh, dedication to a community, but a larger picture. Are those also not, are those restricted and not?
Yeah, the, the, the application process will have some restrictions on it and it does promote, one of the restrictions, it has to promote a locally band.
A local event. Gotcha.
Any further questions?
So, sorry question.
One more.
I know that with like the visitation, I, we bring the banners over there. And I know that they do them for the dinner, for their, for their, um, enrollment. And I know, I think Saint Francis does it as well. Um, are those entities not going to be able to do it anymore?
That's correct. We're gonna isolate it to just Forest Grove events, Forest Grove nonprofit.
Can, so I have a follow up question. Um, I, I'm assuming the intent is to make sure that it's local events and it stays local. And then there was also like a subscriber, I mean, how many people, I, I guess I'm just gonna ask this question. Can you, would it be too much work to track to make sure, to see how often there's no banners up? Or like, how often we're utilizing the service?
Yeah, no, that's, that's not a lot of work. We, we track that all the time. It's not often that there is not a banner.
Yeah, I guess like my question is, you know, switching some of these things, like I just wanna see the results of this policy, if there was a huge change or not a change or, you know what I mean? Like, so if, if Council Marshall's saying that visitation used it and now they're not gonna use it, I'm just wondering if there's gonna be vacant times where it's vacant or if we're still gonna ha- have it be utilized a lot.
When there, it happens to be a week or something where there is not a, an event going on, we do have backup banners that we can hang promoting other things. Make sure that there's always some advertising going.
Got it. Any other questions? Wait, what is the wish of the council?
I move to approve resolution number twenty twenty four dash one three.
My second.
He will just flip it from the last. Uh, will the city manager please read the resolution by title only?
Resolution twenty twenty four dash thirteen, resolution approving the City of Forest Grove Light and Power Community Service Program Description for Installation of Informational Street Banners.
Sorry, I forgot to name that Councilor Gustafson moved the resolution and Council President Rippey seconded. Uh, we will now have discussion. Any discussion on this?
Without trying to open a can of worms, because it seems to me that the discussion is very similar to our discussion about who can be on boards and commission. And we've tried to expand that to be more inclusive of our nearby neighbors. And to me, it would seem that, you know, if, again, I don't wanna open a Pandora's box here and I know it's hard to do it, but the, the, the dinner at, at Visitation every November, that's a big area. That to, it's actually a tourism attraction to Forest Grove. And, uh, so that I can, I can imagine there might be some other things like that of within the neighborhood. So, uh, let's, in, in my opinion, let's see how this works. But if we, if we get some interest from our neighbors in the vicinity, we might want to, to be more inclusive of our neighbors with the intent of not opening it to everybody.
Yeah, I agree with you, but on a policy level, we, I think it's really important that we're consistent. So going back to the analogy or the, about the boards and commission, that was stated like in the outskirts, but part of the Forest Grove School District. So whatever language, if, I just think if that should be the same language.
Yeah, I agree.
You know what I mean? Like, we have to make sure that as we're making policy decisions, we're holding ourselves accountable to like the parameters. But I do agree, like, I think we should let it go, let it, see what happens for this first year and see if we need to make some amendments or changes. I think we'll know more.
I think we should be consistent and this is not being.
So my question I pose, if we're still in discussion.
We are still in discussion.
My question that I pose is this, is that we've been very strategic in terms of to make sure that, as the council says, we are participating and encouraging our neighbor, and boards and commissions and advertisements, those types of things. So I would really like to see that language included now, uh, mainly because it is consistent with how we've done all of our other policies. So I would like something basically that says within the school district or something like that, that we've used as a definer for our local park. Is that a motion?
Add an amendment?
I was gonna say, is that an amendment and a motion?
Well, I have to say temporary.
I'd like to make another comment to that. I, I, I don't disagree. But at the same time, I think that we need to put the importance of Forest Grove events as a priority. Because as it is within Forest Grove, there's competition on getting that banner up, um, but between nonprofits within Forest Grove. You know, who's gonna make the call first or whatever, um, especially when it's, you know, big, big time of the, of the year for, um, for gatherings and events and that sort of thing. So if we're, if we're bringing in other groups, now we are doing a disservice to the tourism in Forest Grove and, and community in Forest Grove.
Yeah, kind of pushback that, because tourism that's brought in from, um, Visitation or brought in, that is bringing tourism, yeah, to, uh, Forest Grove. I understand, you know, regarding that we want it, and I know that you guys compete like crazy for the banner. I mean, I do know that from, you know, uh, life experience. Uh, so I do understand that. I just would like to see us to be a little bit more inclusive and making sure that we're not, uh, neglect, neglecting our partners that do bring in our. That's my.
I mean, I, I would personally like to make the motion to amend it and have it in, be included into the school district area.
Turn within the school district, the Forest Grove School District area? So that would be Cornelius.
Have the boards and commissions set up, that same parameter.
Okay, let's, can we ask Keith, would that be, how much more work is that for Light and Power?
It's relative, I mean, not that much. We have this, as staff have the same discussion. Light and Power is fine with whatever you, you all want to decide.
We do have.
So there's a, a motion, there's a, okay.
Can I say one more thing before we do a motion?
Well, let's get the, is there a second? Yeah, we have to do the motion.
The amendment, I'm sorry.
I'll second the amendment.
Okay, so it was moved by Council Marshall and seconded by Council President Rippey to amend the first whereas, I lost it on the screen. Right, can you put it back? Please, thanks. To the first whereas, to change, to promote events occurring within the Forest Grove School District area by installing, right? Is that, is that a correct, I wanna make sure I have that correct with. Right, with Forest Grove area. Okay, so, uh, is there, there's a mo, so now is there discussion on that?
So have we, have we hung banners for Cornelius before?
I don't know.
I'm sorry.
For Cornelius.
Have we hung banners here for Cornelius events in the past?
I don't remember Cornelius. We have hung banners for Gaston, North Lane, Banks. Some areas that are outside.
Banks and North Plains would be out of the question on this, but.
I personally look at it from a standpoint of, I mean, I know I'm pushing the visitation thing because I'm part of the dinner, but that brings in anywhere from eight to ten thousand people in a one day period. That's a huge tourism pool for Forest Grove. And it's, um, their board doesn't have a hotel, doesn't have anything. So they're coming to Forest Grove to stay, to do anything like that. There's people that come from across the country for it. So it's a, it's bigger deal. And I'm not just limiting to that. I don't know if they even will use the banner going forward with it. But in general, if somebody's bringing that much business to Forest Grove, we, and they're only five minutes away, kinda makes sense.
I'd like to leave it the way it is because it's consistent with what we've done.
Put the board and commission.
Right, yeah, this amendment.
Marshall's amendment.
So, um, again, I, I understand the making it the same. That's very important and I, I like that continuity. And one of the reasons why we, we did that for the boards and, for the commissions because of lack of interest. So that helped us bring in those different people, right, that want to serve. And I am all for, you know, helping nonprofits and Visitation. My kids went there too. And our partners, uh, uh, as a matter of fact, at one time, when my previous mayor was here, I mentioned, um, allowing Cornelius to take advantage of in-city rates for Forest Grove. And absolutely not. So again, think about that because it will take us to the next level, which I was supportive of letting Cornelius, you know, have, have city rates. But this, it, you know, becomes more and more and more. So it's just something to consider when we're deciding to make this parameter what we use as our guidelines for different policies.
Council President Rippey.
Again, I'd also like to point out the fact that for these events that are just in the immediate area, they're drawing Forest Grove residents out there as well. So it's, it's to, it's to the benefit of the quality of life for our residents to know about these immediate events in the immediate area. And, and I think that's important for our residents to know about these things. Not everybody is gonna be driving down, uh, Martin or those roads out there to see the road signs about things or see road signs about anything to do with Dilly or, or Gales Creek for that matter. So I think have, them having the ability to put something here to attract our residents out to their events is important.
Further discussion? Let's vote, one more discussion.
I don't know, I, sorry, I'm confused about process, but.
Just on the amendment right now, we're just discussing the amendment.
Request an amendment to the amendment.
You have to, we have to vote on this first.
Okay.
And then we will.
Got it.
One step at a time, just for my, just for my ease of doing this. Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
So is Visitation part of the Forest Grove School District? It's not, is it?
The schools around it, so that would be within that area. And I, right, as of right now, I don't even think that they use that banner for the sausage dinner.
Oh.
I'm just saying in general that it would be something that would be in that school district. The kids around that area do go to that school. Cut off line for Banks is on the outside of that area.
I think they.
It is within the boundary.
I think the cafeteria, they used to use the food services.
They don't anymore.
Okay, further discussion on the amendment?
I think, did you have something, Jesse, that I didn't hear?
I was just gonna confirm that it is within the school district boundary.
Okay, let's, can we do a roll call vote on the amendment?
Can I get clarification on who seconded the amendment?
Yeah, Council President Rippey. Just clarification on who seconded the amendment, which was you, and I was just clarifying that. So now we're gonna take a roll call vote on the amendment.
Councilor Gustafson?
Yes.
Council President Rippey?
Yes.
Councilor Martinez?
Yes.
Councilor Marshall?
Yes.
Councilor Ewing?
Yeah.
Mayor Wenzel?
Yes, the amendments for the first whereas changing the City of Forest Grove to the Forest Grove School District area is approved by the Forest Grove City Council in a vote of six to zero. We will now continue with discussion. Is there any additional amendments or discussion? Councilor Gustafson?
Is there any interest in prioritizing Forest Grove events?
How does it go right now? Does it, the first come, first served?
It is on a ninety day win. Three months in advance, you can.
How long, you can hold it for one week is typically how long you hang.
Right, Monday to Monday. Kind of covers the whole weekend and then weekend.
I feel fine just first come, first served with, because, I mean, the thing is like, I under, I understand what you're saying, prioritizing, but again, I think that the va, they're like, I don't ever wanna be, I guess it's just hard for me. Like, I just like a system, like you, here are the, the bookends. If you fall within, then you're gonna get it. Cause I feel like sometimes we, I don't wanna have any value-based decisions, right? Like, I don't know, I feel like by having the whereas, we are staying Forest Grove area. So like, I, I would assume that all of them are locally, I mean, they're all pretty much local events. So I don't know, and I don't wanna create a lot of more administrative work for Light and Power.
It is definitely more administrative work. I wouldn't consider it value-based. I mean, we, we are the city council for Forest Grove, or again, not for Cornelius and Visitation, all of that. But just, just something to throw out there if, um, you know, if that might be something that we need or maybe we can, you know, if we start getting phone calls saying, hey, I wanted to put up my banner and they said that Cornelius gotta put up their banner, maybe if it becomes an issue, this is something maybe you can let us know.
Yes, I think. Yeah, I think that's a really valid point because we don't wanna have it tied up with another municipality.
Right.
But, I mean, and I guess that's kind of like going back to the Forest Grove School District area is like, and your example about out of area fees, it's because people pay levies here, right? And pay Light and Power here and that's our workers doing it, so. Yeah.
But if it's not broke, it's fine, right? I mean, yeah, if it's fine, then it's fine.
Yeah, maybe Cornelius won't even know that we're gonna let them do that.
And I have no problem with after a year of it. And I have no problem with after a year of it, as it's now done, if there are problems, then yes, I would like it to come back and we address it more vigorously.
Okay, further discussion? Want to make sure everyone is good? Okay, so, resolution number two zero two four, two, wait, sorry. Resolution number two zero two four dash one three was moved by Council Gustafson, seconded by Council, Council Ri, President Rippey. Um, and it was amended, and so, do I have to do any, do I have to read it as amended, or can we just go to a vote?
The title remained the same, so.
Okay.
Just read the title.
So you already read the title, right?
Did I already, okay.
Yeah, after we did the first and the second, and then it was in the discussion that we amended it.
Okay.
So I will ask the city recorder to, um, call roll.
Council Gustafson?
Yes.
Council President Rippey?
Yes.
Council Martinez?
Yes.
Council Marshall?
Yes.
Council Ewing?
Yes.
Mayor Wenzel?
Yes, resolution number two zero two four dash one three, as amended, has been approved by the Forest Grove City Council in a vote of six to zero. Phew, thank you, Keith. Thanks for your patience during that. And now we will move on to council communications, and we're going to start with Council President Rippey with his report.
Yeah, thank you. The, as was reported earlier this evening, EDC did meet on Thursday, April 11th. They re, received a presentation from Senior Planner Anne Riordan on the transportation system plan. There, um, I think my observation around that is that the EDC and even some of the other commissions may benefit by having a periodic presentation on, uh, major happenings within the city. So, they seem to be very interested in all things transportation because of businesses and the flow of traffic through town. The Chamber Moord Board met on Monday, uh, 15th. It was reported that Dusty Cars is having difficulty obtaining permission for some sort of signage along Adair Pacific Avenue. Have no idea what that means, but I don't know who, who takes care of that, Ryan. Um, there will be a spring wine walk in downtown Forest Grove on Saturday, May 4th, from 1:00 to 5:00. Heritage Conference will be in town on May 17th, 20th.
It was last week, yeah.
It was last week, it was April.
It was awesome.
Last week?
Yep.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
It happened, don't worry.
And the Chambers, uh, Chambers, uh, Board's annual retreat will be held at Cornelius Library on June 5th, 8:30. I will not be.
What was, can you say that again?
On June 5th, at 8:30.
Is the Chamber Retreat?
The Chambers Retreat, yeah.
I don't know if I can.
You make it?
Oh, it's the, it's the full day.
Yeah.
At 8:30 in the morning.
Would any other councillor be willing to attend that?
I may have a staff meeting at work that day, usually at the worst.
Is it all day retreat, or is it?
I think it's kind of a half day.
When does it begin? June 5th.
June 5th at 8:30.
Uh.
Cornelius Library.
I, I would consider it if need be.
And I'm, I will find out if I could maybe do a different day for staff meeting to that multiple days, so if.
Staff? We're going to have staff there, right?
Yeah, staff will be in attendance.
The last item I have is the, uh, the unit that is out here at our National Guard, the second of the 218 field artillery will be deploying in August, committing. So I'm not sure if there are any ceremonies planned for their deployment, but there usually is, and usually cities are involved in some way sending them off and then also welcoming them back. So we probably need to check a little bit. I actually have a meeting tomorrow with their EXO. Might have more information.
They actually did reach out to talk about a proclamation, so I'm in contact with, um, some of the people who are sending them off to, and I'll let you know when I have more information.
Okay, great.
Hey, thank you, Council President Rippey, uh, Council Gustafson.
Um, okay, I don't have much, um, so, Public Arts Commission, the, um, Festival of the Arts will be starting on May 1st, that is, um, the first Wednesday market, so it will be, um, four months of this, the first, first Wednesday, um, of the next four months. They have a, a brochure out with all of the different, um, art, um, items, art, um, events, because there's, there's going to be, it's all different kinds of arts, right? It's, it's not just still art, so, um, you can look up on Adelante's website or the library website and you should be able to find out information. Um, the Seven Generations and Guardians of the Grove, um, Art Installation, um, they will reach out, um, Madam Mayor, when they, um, have the unveiling all figured out so that you can come on out and participate. Um, so that's really exciting, and they also filled out, um, a request form for a subcommittee. So it's, this will be the first one, so we're, we're, we'll all try to bump through it together. But it was, it's pretty straightforward, so that'll, that'll probably be at the next meeting, that's all I got.
Cool, thank you. Council Marshall?
All right, and so, met with Forestry on the 17th, which they basically went over everything that we went over. Um, they also will be, um, buttoning up what they're going to propose for the Main Street Trees, um, the removal. Um, and they're probably going to be asking for our, our opinion on that, which way to go. Also, that same exact day had the Parks and Rec meeting, um, we went over Hazel Hills is starting demo now. Um, one cool thing they're going to have for the FG Loop and Kyle Project, they'll have a booth at the market to get, um, community input, um, starting up there. The plan meeting, um, with, uh, staff and 100% to start soon, or some more to it, sorry. Uh, the merry-go-round is back up and working at Ann and Abby's Yard.
Good.
Um, what's the other one? Slides are up and finished, there's going to be a new diving board that's coming to the pool by the end of July. Yeah, and then, um, didn't have much information on this, I couldn't grab that, but it was the School District received some funds for summer programming from grade five to 12, um, as an add-on, we'll be working with the Parks and Rec Department for that. Um, and then, like they said, with the Arbor Day planning, uh, with the tree planning, they had four classes came out from Joseph Gale. Um, so it was a kind of a collab with Parks and Rec and Forestry, because they were all there, and they did say that they had a handful of kids come out and they were asking a lot of questions and it was a lot of fun for them, so. Um, and a turf field is going into Cornelius by Adair, so they're starting on that as well. Um, and they will be going over annual volunteer award, be voting on that type of stuff. That all I have.
Thank you. Council Martinez?
I don't have anything, I didn't have any meetings with committees this last two weeks, so.
Thank you. Um, Council Ewing?
So, a couple of things, um, so, um, there's a new term that's being applied to DEI, and I don't know if you guys are familiar, but it is now being used nationwide, and that is DEIA, and A being accessibility. So I would hope that we'd have that discussion and to decide whether we, as a council philosophically, uh, want to include that and what that would constitute. Uh, what kind of work from staff to make that, uh, change, and, um, how it will impact the city financially as well as, you know, as quality of life. Also, um, I had a request, uh, and I'm going to pose this to Jesse, that I had a request from a couple of community members who are taking classes at, um, Valley Arts, and those classes are sometimes three to four hours. They're worried because what they were told, um, I won't name names because it wasn't a staff person. Anyway, what they were told was that, oh, just park there, they won't ticket you. So I want to know, do we need to have a discussion? Because these guys don't want to break the law. Do we need to begin having a discussion about a parking permit for those who are taking classes at a local business? I don't know what that would entail, but I'm putting it forward, um, to see how we want to handle that. I really don't hope that we don't set our community members up for being ticketed, uh, if they're taking an unveiling of classes. Um.
Can I ask a quick question?
Mm-hmm.
Is the parking lot behind Valley Art, isn't that four hours?
It's full all the time.
That, that would go back to the, I would, I believe that would go back to, then Pacific students would be able to park there at any time because they're taking a class at school. It, it, it.
Local business class. Yeah, I'm not talking about.
I mean, it would.
Still, yeah.
It's still.
That's what I'm saying, we need to have some conversation.
Well, we're looking at the parking lot, like, identifying parking lot, I mean, right, like, that was, um, I feel like we had this conversation about directing people where to park, like, having more parking lots that were four hours in the downtown court, naming them. Like, didn't we have a work session about some of this stuff, and where are we at with that?
That was like a couple, maybe three years ago.
I know, but that's why I'm like, where, where are we at with that?
My opinion around this is that Valley Art, the onus is on Valley Art. If they have, they say that to a client or a patron, and the patron gets the ticket, the patron takes the ticket to Valley Art, say, you reimbursed because you told me that I wasn't going to get a ticket. The onus is on that business, not on the city.
Okay.
I'm just putting it out there for you guys.
That's my opinion, but, you know, they shouldn't be telling them that.
I totally agree, and we did have that discussion. I just wanted to put it before the whole body to know that that is out there and there's questioning going on about it so that we could have a discussion and decide if we wanted to go forward on something or if, um, we leave it as is with, as you said, Tim, the onus being on business that is, uh, informing them. So.
I do think that we, I still get complaints from business owners and, and community members about parking all the time, it's like the number one thing. But, um, and that back parking lot is 100% filled out, filled up by one particular business. And so I, I do think it would be really something to think about to start some sort of committee or task force that includes business owners, um, to have a conversation about, about parking, and because many of them are like, they're, they're saying, I will pay you money, you know, give me a permit, I will pay you money. Um, because they're, they're choosing to get tickets because of the lack of parking.
Should we perhaps think about having this as a, as having this as a further discussion? Since, as you said, it was like three years ago, we kind of began it and it got lost, I think in the pandemic or however it got lost. Uh, could we possibly consider that as a council to have a further discussion on this at a later?
Yeah, I think the discussion we had on parking related to the festival retreat.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. We probably need to have a separate discussion just on parking.
Because I'm, I'm hearing the opposite, I'm hearing from business owners that they want it to be 15-minute parking. So that people just come in and pick up and that kind of thing, so. I, I know, again, it's that catch 22 of like giving it longer for some and then shorter for some.
That's why I'd like us to maybe as a whole body have that discussion. Could we, uh, could I then ask staff to, uh, at some point put up, uh, on our docket for a deeper discussion about how we want to work on parking in the downtown or permit parking? Now that I've stirred that up.
And I, I have a, a question too, do, does, do we have a mapping showing the hours where different parking?
We do.
Okay.
Yeah.
That would be helpful.
That's kind of where the crap comes. The next thing I did want to announce, uh, was that there was a huge conference back east. Uh, I wasn't able to attend, but one of my friends was, uh, that's where the DEIA came from. Uh, but I want to do a shout-out for Tuolumne Habitat for Humanity. There were 50 states that were represented at this conference, it was massive. Uh, and Habitat Quality, uh, was called out as being the biggest, biggest repair builder in the nation.
Art, wow, wow, that's amazing.
And I want to pass that forward because, wow, you guys, wow, that is really saying something about that little engine that can. Um, Forest Grove, uh, Senior Center had their retreat on Saturday. I did not attend, I wanted them, I was asked, but I did not attend, I wanted them to be able to speak freely. And sometimes, as you all know, I get talkative. And, so I wanted them to have time to really speak freely and without, uh, council in the room during their retreat. Uh, I believe that, Tim, you were, um, as a board member, so if there were anything of critical nature, um, I will find out at my next meeting. Um, also, I wanted to mention that they're working on the Celebrate Forest Grove event, and they have selected October 19th for the event. And, uh, they are just now forming their committee to work on that, get auction items, I guess they've already gone crazy and started to auction.
Is that what used to be the mayor's, so October 19th?
October 19th, and it starts at 5:30 for greetings, looking at auction items, uh, and I believe, um, refreshment, and then it goes into presentation dinner. Uh, let's see. The, they're working on, uh, the bathroom upgrades, they've had some problems there with equipment and I think one of the, uh, grab bars was pulled out, and so, uh, the city is working with them on those upgrades to do that. They also have added two changing stations for, uh, baby changing stations for each, uh, bathroom, and I'd like to do a shout-out to the Rotary Club who donated those changing sta, stations. Thank you so much for your work on that. Also, YMCA has, as of the end of March, hold their contract from, uh, the Senior Center. Just a difference in philosophy, a difference, and, um, just a difference in what they want to be going, uh, YMCA. So that contract is done as of the end of March. Uh, CCE, uh, had, just, we had discussed some past concerns, and, um, so they feel like they're getting a rebirth and they're starting over, but they did want to bring a couple of these out. Um, one was that, um, they really feel that they want more guidance, which is relying on engagement, how to do that. So I've talked with Stephanie and worked with her, and we're going to begin doing an engagement 101 so that they can understand really a larger concept of how to engage the community. Um, let's see. Uh, they want to know, is there any, uh, key, uh, concerns or key topic that we know of as the council that are going to, uh, be an issue or going to be of a concern that they could possibly work on, uh, and get up on our goal planning for the coming year? So if anybody wants to add that, I know that Melinda, you'd mentioned that you'd like them, uh, perhaps doing a governance 101. Uh, so I have put that forward to them, but I would like to mention that this little team did a tremendous job, they do actually have a governance 101 package that we really aren't as familiar with as we probably could be. But they're going to be bringing that back, uh, in front of the whole team. We're going to upgrade it, we're going to look at it and make sure that it's meeting the objectives, things that are put forward for them. And then I'm hoping to have that presented then to the camp going. Uh, they also want to do what they call a board and commission budget. So they feel that one of the problems is, is that all of the boards and commissions do phenomenal work and they don't know what one another thinks. We've heard this many times. Uh, you know, the dinner is a great place, but that really doesn't get that camaraderie and partnership. We've heard this many times. Uh, you know, the dinner is a great place, but that really doesn't get that camaraderie and partnership between the boards. So what they're thinking is designating one of their members to be a board and commission, uh, buddy and actually attend a couple of the different boards and commissions and get to know them as well as get to know us and what we're working on and what we're capable of perhaps supporting. I think that that's kind of it. Um, just the highlights on that is pretty much, uh, yep, that's it for me.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Counselor. Jesse, City Manager, report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few items. Uh, first a shout out to Keith sitting in the back from Lightning Power. Keith has been working with Pacific University. There's an area at Lincoln Park that is not very well lit between uh, the softball field and then the football field to the south. We've had several concerns about that particular area, particularly in the nighttime. So Keith has been working with Pacific to install some light poles and some lights in that particular area. We have some things on order. We're expecting that project to be complete likely in late summer, uh, when there's no use on the fields and we can get in there, uh, when there's no, when there's no conflict. So thanks to Keith for, for working with Pacific on that. Friendly reminder, we have budget committee meeting on April 29th, 6:00 PM. This meeting will focus on the general fund and some of our, um, non-enterprise accounts. And then last, uh, uh, shout out to Greg Robertson, our Public Works Director. Greg submitted for a Safe Routes to School grant for Mountain View Lane. If you recall, we had applied for a Safe Routes to School grant for this particular area several years ago. However, the project cost far surpassed what the grant amount was due to some complications with the railroad. So Greg has reapplied, um, and we were very encouraged to learn, uh, that out of a hundred applications that were received, we were ranked second in the state. So, uh, and we applied for substantially significantly more money than we did before. I think we applied for $1.5 million. Now, the second part of the application process starts and the second part is basically kind of refining your project proposal. Uh, that'll be due, I believe sometime in May and then the final grants will be awarded, um, in January. So, uh, great work to Greg Robertson and his team for filling that out, getting that placed second. And then, uh, we'll be following up with phase two of that application here very soon. So with that, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Jesse. That's really good news. Um, yeah, it's great news. And I just also like to say, you know, Keith, uh, Lightning Power also looked at the barber pole and made sure that was, because Pacific was, can, you know, when I met with Dr. Quill, President Quill, she was a little concerned. There's been some things, but it was just the thing at the top that was loose and it structurally it's sound. So, um, I just think we have a really good partnership with Pacific right now. And I'm really excited about that, those lights. Um, I have a whole lot, but I'm going to try to cut it back. So WCCC, it's our transportation, our county coordinating committee. Um, we're really just looking at some funding gaps. The good news for us is that, uh, the, the new MISTIP allocation funds, uh, Fern Hill, Highway 47 and Maple, that site plan's already done. So we shouldn't get bumped off of that. It's just going to be a question of what happens, um, with the county's budget and how they view the WCCC as, um, more of an advisory committee instead of taking our recommendations. There's been a little bit of concern about that lately. Then I met, I went to the Washington County Chair plus Mayor meeting and got a presentation from the Sheriff's Department and Behavioral Health about the Oregon Drug Intervention Plan and that goes with the Measure 110 reform. So they're talking about behavioral, like deflection instead of, um, jail and what that means for our local police. Then they're just going to really try to roll that out. So we'll see how that, and then Chair Harrington has a budget message on May 20th or on April 29th. And the county budget's going to be presented on May 13th, a question and answer budget. And then, um, at our, I think that's when I can, if you guys have any questions for me about the county's budget, or if you look at it, I will have a meeting with her on May 13th and I can ask her questions. I think the concerns for cities right now are MISTIP funding and library funding. I think that they're looking at changing how they've done that in the past. And so we have to be diligent in saying that used to be the four things the county funded and we really need those things funded.
Do you happen to know, um, at this time, Melinda, whether or not they have, uh, been able to rectify the bankruptcy that they were, or the lack of funds that they were talking about last year? Do we know?
No. No. I mean, we know that they're still in deficit. So that's what we know. We don't know. I mean, they don't even have, um, a capital improvement, like plan. I mean, there's some things the county doesn't have with their budget that, you know, we're, I'm like, what do you mean you don't have that? So I think they're trying to build those things out currently. I'll have more information later.
Can we find out who has, I know that we don't have a huge homeless issue right now, but can we find out who the county is contracting with?
That's a good, Jesse.
Do we know who has county contracts?
I believe it's still the Forest Grove Foundation for this area.
Are you talking here or Washington County?
No, 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 here.
There's several contracts with several, excuse me, several contracts with several providers contracted with the county. I believe the Forest Grove Foundation still has this geographic area.
Um, just a couple of things. I did attend Pacific's luau, um, last week, Saturday, and that was great. Next Saturday, uh, Pacific University is hosting their very first Powwow. So if you could make it to that, that would be amazing. Um, in the fall, they're going to be celebrating 175th anniversary. A couple just, I also attended the community engagement at the Eastside Park. Counselor Martinez showed up as well. With Place, our consultants who helped us with Dykes Park, and they do a really good job with community engagement. There's, the school districts actually decided to put turf in at Neil Armstrong as well. I don't know if there's any capacity for lights there, but I think that'd be a great idea. I attended the Oregon Heritage Awards on Thursday. The Habitat for Humanity Gala, so I'll mention to Virginia, your comments, Counselor Ewing, but that is Saturday at the Senior Center, um, April 27th, starting at 5:00 PM. Uh, the, the Chamber of Commerce hosted the State of the City. That's been a long time historical thing. I guess what I want to, they did a great job. They always do a good job hosting. Uh, my second, this is my second year doing the State of the City. And I want to bring the idea to council. I guess my concern with how the State of the City is done currently is it's a ticketed event. It costs $20 to attend if you're a member and $25 to attend if you're not. No other city that I know of regionally, uh, charges people to come to their State of the City. Um, this is not, I understand it's a big fundraiser for the chamber and I, um, you know, might like fully willing to work with the chamber and do a city update and try to make sure they still have their event. But I think it's really important that the city of Forest Grove, talking about accessibility and equity, offers a free State of the City where any community member, regardless of income, can come. And whether some cities have done it on a council night, so the whole council is there and the council can share reporting out. They do it evenings. I mean, Banks is doing a dessert bar. Tuolumne's doing a breakfast. I mean, literally no, so for me, like I wanted to invite the Center for Community Engagement Pacific. I wanted to invite some students, but I can't invite them to a, an event that the city doesn't host and that costs money. And so those are my concerns. I, I don't want the chamber to think I'm, I think they do a great job. I just think that a State of the City should be free. It should be part of the city budget. Sorry, Paul. But it should be planned and organized by our community. We have a communication management team. Like this should not, this is where we talk about our accomplishments, our priorities and transparency. So, um, I just want to put that out there that I think that we need to.
Do you want me to start that conversation since I'm there?
I mean, what, what do you guys, how do you guys feel about it?
I actually didn't know or didn't realize until today when I attended that, um, that it was a fundraiser for the chamber. I thought that the money spent was to, directly went to the food that was purchased, right? I thought it costs, you know, this much money per person for food. So I didn't realize it was a fundraiser until today. And so be that as it may, I just wonder as, you know, as a, as a government official, if, if we should be charging for this at all. I mean, we, we, you know, we're the city council and with this is, this is, this is a city thing, right? It just, it seems very wrong to do.
Well, so and that's, so you and I got elected, you know, and I'm going to be really honest. There was a lot of meetings coming at me, a lot of stuff. Like I was just old when it was, this is like, it was communicated to me. It's like, this is historically how we've done it in Forest Grove. And I believe that, but I also think that you sometimes have to change things and I, and I would say that I don't know of any other, I've gone to many of them and I don't think you should charge to get an update from your electeds. And I think the community expects to see, you know, and how it is. Like at noon, I never went to a State of the City prior to becoming mayor because I am working. So like the accessibility of when people can come to it, doesn't work for most people's schedules. And it costs money. So like, I didn't want to invite, like, and it's not our event. So I was talking to Stephanie and Stephanie's like, I haven't promoted it because it's not our event. It's not even the city's event. So we can't promote it, right? It's kind of like after the fact, we can use TV, CCTV recording and post it. But so these are some of my concerns. I do think I would be fine. I mean, if it's fine with the council, I would like you to start a conversation with them because I think, I don't want them to think it is a big fundraiser for them. So how we can, like, I don't, and I think if the update from the city should be, you know, can be given. I just don't think it should be the State of the City through the chamber luncheon. Like I'll come in, in the summer, I mean, and that would be nice because I could actually pick a time that works for my schedule, right? Instead of figuring out with Jeff, the mayor of Cornelius and some different things. I just think that we really need to offer a free State of the City.
I don't have a problem with that at all. Uh, I think it is. Look forward. Could we possibly have a deeper discussion about costs, uh, maybe during the budget session? Get an idea of what something like that might cost us to do, but I, I have.
Cool. And then one final thing before I adjourn the meeting is I've never received this and actually Mariah sent it to me. But we received a request for myself to write a letter of recommendation for Bob Wismer to receive the NS DAR, which I know DAR stands for Daughters of the American Revolution, right? But I don't know what NS stands. It's a national award for patriotism. So I don't know. I guess I just wanted, I've never had a request for a letter of recommendation as the mayor. And so I could write it, um, as myself as the mayor, but I thought it would, since I, we had a council meeting, I'd run it past you all and see if it's okay if we recommend, uh, so just so you know, Bob Wismer, um, ran the Veterans Day assemblies at the high school for many, many of years. Um, I think 30 years probably and is like really active with veterans things. I don't know all of the, but how do you guys feel about that? A letter of recommendation.
I think opens the door. I would like us to have a deeper conversation about what recommendations, um, and have some sort of thought about, not just the who, but what are we willing? So, um, I would rather that we actually have a conversation as a body about what that would look like. Is there a deadline on this?
I don't know, but Mariah, do you mind writing them back saying that we don't have a, we got it April 7th?
I think they said they wanted to submit it by May 15th.
This is the teacher that ran the assemblies. Is the school district doing something?
I have no idea. I got an email from Mariah.
I think it would be more appropriate for the school district because he was a former school district.
Yeah. So Mariah, do you mind responding to them that we don't typically do letters of recommendation?
Absolutely.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Um, I'm trying to think if there's anything. Oh, one final thing. I'm sorry. We had the work, the joint work session with, right? State of Cornelius, School District, Pacific. What, what we're thinking and we're going to do right now and all the other organizations have agreed is to hire a facilitator to drive, work to kind of like organize us and be, and bring the entities together to do inventory, collaborate. The concern from the I, and Jesse, you can speak at any point, but the concern was if we didn't bring an outside entity in to facilitate the discussion, like we were afraid that it would just kind of spin and, you know, and doesn't have, and I know that our staff doesn't have the capacity to add more things on. I heard that from the school district at my table. So each group will pay a quarter of the fee of the consultant.
We just need to have that added into our budget.
Yep. We're proposing that at the budget meeting, but I want to give you guys then a heads up on that, that that's where that's coming from is so hopefully we can get things out of it.
This is the same thing we do with the fire district discussion. You have an outside entity that's nonpartisan and facilitate the discussion.
So it goes something. Perfect.
Fine with me. As long as we have the funds to do it. I'm, more than anything, it's good to have these joint sessions, but we have to do something concrete. We haven't ever gotten there. So we need to.
Yeah. We need to.
Else we need to stop.
No, we need to get something done. Okay. I'm going to adjourn this meeting. We're going to take a couple minute break. I'm going to use the bathroom and then we'll have our work session.